Good morning. It's time to call the meeting to order for the February 19 meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have our TV covered. Chinotson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the Commission. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Pocon, San Ys Valley, San Ria and Orchid areas. Re-broadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Would you like me to proceed to the roll call?
All right, please.
Commissioner Keller.
Present.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Here.
Commissioner Senour.
Here.
Commissioner Poliche.
Here.
And Chair Newman.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to our third agenda item for the election of the 2020 Montecito Planning Commission Chair, First Chair, Vice Chair and Second Chair. Commissioner Kupiatk.
I would like to nominate Donna Senour as the first, as the Chair.
Did you mean to say First Vice Chair?
No, Chairman.
Chairman, Chairperson, all right. Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
All right, discussion. Commissioner Senour?
No.
Any discussion?
All I wanted to say is that I was sorry I was unable to be here last month, and maybe we should consider it as a Commission policy that we not have elections until all the Commissioners can be present, because it then allows for a majority vote, and it's, I think, important to have that consensus. So, just for the record, I would like to say, I would, I would hope that in the future we would have elections when all the Commissioners could be present, and I'm sorry, I was unable to be here. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded that Donna Senour serve as Chair for 2020. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Aye.
Commissioner Senour.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Newman.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, why don't we take a moment to recess and we'll literally move the chairs around.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Kupiatk for First Vice Chair.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second that for Bob.
Any discussion? If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Senour.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And now, moving forward, if we could have nominations for Second Vice Chair going forward. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ron Poliche.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Senour.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Moving on, we have the Agenda Status Report, I believe. Thank you. Oh, no, excuse me. Appointment of the 2020 Montecito Planning Commission Secretary and Recording Secretary. Do we have nominations, please? First, the Planning Commission Secretary.
I believe that it's our position to nominate David Vialobos in that position.
So, we have two positions, one as Secretary and one as Recording Secretary, and I'm sure Mr. Wilson would love to take delight in his workload a little bit, but I would suggest that you nominate Mr. Wilson as Secretary.
Sorry, the subtlety of the titles escaped me. I would nominate Jeff Wilson as Secretary. Secretary, yes, thank you.
Any seconds, please?
I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussion moving forward? Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Oh, heartily aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Senour.
Yes, for sure.
Motion passes five to zero.
And we are now advancing to nominations for Recording Secretary, is that correct? Yes, so moving forward, do we have a nomination, please?
I have my light on and I don't see, oh, yes, there it is. I would like to nominate Mr. Vialobos for the Recording Secretary.
And do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, moving forward, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Senour. Motion passes five to zero.
Now, we are, is this correct, at the Agenda Status Report. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Congratulations, Madam Chair and First and Second Vice Chair. The status of the agenda today is we have on the agenda the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report, as well as the standard agenda item of the Thomas Fire and Debris Flow Statistics Report. And then, we also have on the second item on the agenda is the Montecito Fire Protection District briefing on the 2020 Fire Code updates. That's, the agenda and staff is prepared and ready to present on those items.
Thank you. Projection Report is next.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, the, our next meeting is scheduled for March 18th. On that date, we have a, the Long Range Planning Division will be presenting the, their work program to the Montecito Planning Commission, and then, the next hearing after that is April 15th. At this time, we don't have anything projected for that date, and then, the other dates is May 20th. There are no items projected for those dates. However, I think the Director's Report will indicate there is a project moving forward. It won't be probably ready by April or May, but there's a development plan that was submitted for the debris nets that will be coming later on this year. But other than that, I recommend just keeping those dates until February, and then, if no items are on the projection report in February, or March, sorry, we're in February already, I mean, March, then we can take any action as far as whether to continue those meetings or to cancel them. That concludes the projection report.
Thank you very much. Do we have comment?
I have a question. Jeff, I thought we were going to hear something regarding the roundabouts this, this first quarter or second quarter. Is that coming up?
Commissioner Poliche, through the chair, are you referring to a briefing or the actual project coming before you?
The actual project.
At this time, I don't have a date of when that project will be coming forward. I know it's currently in the works, and it's scheduled to come sometime this year, but I don't know if it's going to be, it won't be in March because it's already been, I mean, we've been on the projection report already.
Thank you.
And that can update you at the next hearing.
Commissioner Keller?
It's my understanding that it will go before the MBAR, before it comes to us. Is that correct, and has that been scheduled?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair, at this time, I don't have a date of when it's scheduled for MBAR. But it's my understanding that they were going to be given an opportunity to review it as well.
Thank you. Prior, prior to our hearing it.
Chair Keller, oh, Chair Keller. You just got, you know, fast forwarded.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Keller. That is my understanding, that it would go to MBAR and then come before the Planning Commission.
Good, thank you.
I just also have a comment about Commissioner Poliche's comment about the roundabouts. I believe it has been before MBAR, conceptually, on the 6th or 7th of February, and it is, it is coming back to MBAR, although with no date proposed yet that I can find. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a request that when-
Commissioner, Commissioner-
When a date is set, can you notify us? Because that's an MBAR meeting that I would very much like to attend.
Good. Thank you. All right, do we have any public, next is public comment for items not on our agenda today. Do we have any slips?
We do not have any slips, but there are public here.
Yes, and I would just like to remind folks in the audience, if you have something you'd like to speak on that is not on the agenda, you can certainly come up and do so and fill out a speaker slip after or now.
Or right now.
Okay.
Right now.
Ah, right now, great. Okay, Sharon Byrne, please. Thank you very much, and you have three minutes or whatever you wish, up to four minutes. Thank you. You could please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Sharon Byrne. I'm the Executive Director of the Montecito Association. With me today is Durin Johnson, who's Chair of our Land Use Committee. We just want to congratulate Chair Senour and Vice Chair and the Second Vice Chair, or Mr. Poliche. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you this year. We have reviewed the roundabout in nauseating detail in the Land Use Committee and have attended some of the MBAR hearings on it as well, so we'll be watching that as it goes through. But I just want to say congratulations, welcome to 2020, and I hope it's a very great and productive year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments not on the agenda? Great, then we close public comment right now. Thank you. Informational reports. Commissioners, do we have anything, please? Commissioner Newman.
Yes, two weeks ago, the, roughly two weeks ago, the Board of Supervisors at its February 4th meeting passed or approved ordinance amendments to the Montecito Fire District Building Code, the Fire Code in Montecito. Learning of that as an agenda item, I corresponded with the Supervisors and urged that that matter be brought to us for possible review, whether it was on a courtesy basis or otherwise. I learned and was advised by counsel that that is not a matter within our purview in terms of jurisdiction, but afterwards, at the suggestion of Supervisor Williams, I met with the Chief of the Montecito Fire District, and the Chief was only too pleased to have the Fire District come today or at a convenient time to fill us in with respect to both their process and the current amendments which were approved by the Board of Supervisors. So, we're going to hear from them in the agenda today. I mention this as an informational item because I deemed it very important since this Fire Code affects Montecito and the planning area in which we have responsibility for, and I deemed it very important to us and to our community and for the community at large to be advised of the code changes, and very much regretted that it had not previously come before us as an informational or other item. So, those meetings did take place.
Thank you. Any other informational reports? I attended the Montecito Water District Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting, their Strategic Planning Committee meeting, which was informative, and they are progressing to have a meeting for the public on February 24th in Montecito Union School, beginning at 5:00 for an informational public meeting on the Groundwater Sustainability Agency in Montecito. Thank you. Moving forward two minutes, please.
May I speak up?
Oh, that's all.
Thank you. This is a little off-topic, but I think this is a very good forum in which to reach, bring this up. I went to a recent seminar and program presented by the Santa Barbara Foundation in which there was information given about the upcoming census, and there's a great deal of concern about the potential for undercounting the population in Santa Barbara, and I was pleased to learn that there are paid positions available as census takers, and I guess this is as good a forum as any to get the word out, that anybody, especially with Spanish-speaking language skills, would be paid to go house to house to make sure that there's a proper count of residents of Montecito and the Santa Barbara area, because an underreporting will cost us millions of dollars in federal support. So, I just would like to urge anyone who knows people who are bilingual, who are in need of a job, who are free in the evenings to go door to door, to please pass the word. I think this is a critically important subject. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. I think it is. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Any other comments? For discussion, et cetera? Thank you. Moving on to minutes now for the hearing of January 15th for review. Do we have any, upon review, any comments or corrections by any Commissioners? Excuse me? Seeing none? Oh, excuse me. Commissioner, Commissioner Newman, please.
Thank you. I'm a little uncertain as to the meaning of the asterisks that appear in the minutes in a couple places, and I'm wondering if the Secretary could inform us. Do they refer to something?
No, and we can change the notation. That was just really to draw the attention to the fact that the motions, the motion was made and the motion had been withdrawn. And that was really the intent, so you would like to notate it a different way, that's, that's fine. That was the intent.
Okay, thank you.
So, noted. Do, do, does the Commission wish to make a correction regarding the asterisks, or is the wish to have them remain?
It's fine now that it's been explained.
Thank you. If we could have a motion for approval.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kupiatk.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Poliche.
Aye.
And Chair Senour.
Aye.
Motion passes 401.
Thank you. Moving on to the Director's Report, Board of Supervisors Hearing Summary, et cetera. Thank you.
Good morning, Members of the Commission. Congratulations on the appointments. I look forward to working with you as a team this year and our staff. I want to report on a couple of things. As already mentioned earlier, the, there was an application submitted for an emergency permit for the debris nets before the end of the year last year. The county authorized that emergency permit to maintain the debris nets in their current locations. That was in December that that emergency permit was authorized, and now, we are moving forward and going to the Board with a Board Letter to report on that emergency permit, and I don't have the date exactly, but it'll be in the next few weeks that will be up at the Board. They also submitted the development plan that will allow the debris nets to remain in place for five years, so that is moving through the process as well now, and I'm not exactly certain when that will be, before the Planning Commission, but it'll be before the Commission, I'd say, in the next few months, the debris net development plan. Oh, correct, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for reminding me. There's going to be some additional environmental review on that, so it'll take a little bit longer. And then, the Montecito Sanitary District also submitted a development plan application to authorize the existing buildings that are on the site and then, that had not been permitted through the county, and then, also for the future development of new office space that they have plans for. So, that is starting to move through the process. And I think that's it.
Commissioner Keller?
I recall that some time back when other, excuse me, when other construction was done with the Sanitary District, they did come before this body just as a report for plans, and that is something I'd be most interested in, if it wouldn't be, if it would be accommodated by the Sanitary District, just to bring us up to date on those plans. Is that something we can request as a future agenda item?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, I'm not sure I'm, I mean, you want an update on their application, or?
You know, actually, I apologize. I think it was when I was on the Board of Architectural Review that we looked at the plans for the building.
Yes.
And there's been quite a bit of controversy about this. I just feel as though it would be good if we were better informed, whether there is more detail that you could bring to us about the process, or they would be willing to give us an update on their, their process and the, the plans for the, the development. That would be very valuable for me.
Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, the decision is going to be coming to you because it's a development plan application. It's not a Director level, it's a Planning Commission level, so you will be seeing everything that is part of the permit, and we're certainly, I mean, I can ask the Montecito District if they want to come and speak to you, but we can certainly work with you to share the plans, and so you can look at them, you can come in and speak with the planner about it if you have an interest in it, but you are a decision maker on it.
Thank you. It's just best to have as much information as possible, and so, it is anticipated that they will be coming to us at what point?
It's going to be several months, I think, before we figure out exactly when they'll be on the agenda.
Okay, good. It's just a matter of wanting to be informed about what's developing, and that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. Going through minutes of the past year and looking at some of the items in our long-range plan, which we're going to discuss, I wanted to follow up with you and get a sense of where the department is on a number of items that are, been before. First, when I served as Chair, we passed a resolution with respect to compensation, but I don't believe, I've, nobody, I've not seen the formal final resolution not signed it. What is the status of that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman.
Is it gone to the board?
It's in process. Mr. Vialobos, could you provide a response?
No, I'm just trying to recall.
Maybe I'm having a senior moment. I did sign it, but-
I thought that maybe we'd gotten that, but I, I have to double-check that.
Chair Senour, Commissioner Newman, my understanding is that it was signed immediately after that meeting, I think it was in December. Currently, we're targeting dates for that Board Agenda Letter to be done, and so, staff is currently working internally to pull some information together and have that docketed, and we're trying to anticipate, looking at dates in April for that to be docketed to go before the Board.
Okay, so, it'll be docketed with the Board in time to be considered in the context of the next budget?
That's correct.
Chair Senour, Commissioner Newman, that is correct. We're anticipating to have that docketed in the next April or May.
Okay. A couple of other items to follow up. Telecom standards with respect to appeals. Do you know when they'll be available?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, those are part of the ordinance amendments that will be part of the long-range planning program- will be part of the long-range planning program. So they're not on, they're not, they haven't been pulled out to be separated from our ordinance package that we'll be bringing forward.
Okay. I'm referring, we've already passed them, and the Board of Supervisors has passed them already, with respect to the small...
Oh, the changes in the ordinance, I thought you were talking about the design guidelines that would be following. Okay. So those should be in effect inland, in the inland area. And then the coastal, they'll be submitted to the Coastal Commission for their action.
Okay. So the Department has guidelines now that have been promulgated? My recollection of the amendment to the code was that the Director has discretion to grant requests subject to appeal, but there were to be standards promulgated by the Department so to guide both the issuance by the Director and also the appeals that might come before us. That's what I'm referring to.
Right, right. Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, that's what I thought you were referring to.
Okay.
And those have not been initiated yet. We're still in the process of working through our long-range work program and trying to accomplish the tasks that already have been assigned to the Department.
Okay.
But they will be worked into the program.
So we'll see those this year?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'll have to get back to you.
All right. Additionally, this is a year when the Miramar is going to be coming before us with the first annual report. And do we know when that exactly falls?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, I'll have to look into that and let you know when we think that'll be scheduled.
Okay. You know, given that that's going to be of major interest and import, even if it's several months out, if we could put that on this projection report, I think that would be useful both to us and the community. And then, if I may, with respect to the nets, I understand that as Director, within the scope of your authority and the emergency provisions of the county code, you extended the permit for another year. What is exactly going to the Board of Supervisors? I'm unclear about that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, when the Department issues an emergency permit, they are required to report back to the Board of Supervisors that we had done so and what the emergency permit was for.
Okay. So it's a report item?
Correct.
And additionally, if I recall the code correctly, within 90 days of the issuance of the permit, an application is required to be filed? And can you tell us about the status of the application?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, as I said, the development plan application was submitted at the same time as the emergency permit was submitted, so we have that application.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then two other, three other items that are referenced in the long-range plan, maybe we'll talk about them at that time. But one is ADUs, second is short-term rentals, and the third is gas meters, all of which affect our planning area. It's just said they'll be taken up in 2020 without specificity. Is there something we can discuss about that now, or would you rather postpone that to the discussion of the plan?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, I think it's best to discuss that in the context of the long-range plan. But I do want to let you know that as of January 1, the new state law for ADUs is in place in every jurisdiction in the state. And so we are in the process of developing guidelines for how the Department will be processing ADU applications to ensure we don't run afoul of state law. And then we will follow on with amendments to the ADU ordinances so that we, our codes will be consistent with the state law. But in the interim, we will be following the state law, because they mandate that.
Okay, thank you.
The other items, I think, are best discussed in the context of the long-range plan.
Sure. And then one last item, before this fiscal year runs out, Mr. Wilson informed us that our dreary surroundings here were going to be freshened up, that there was some budgetary money for that, as I recall. Is that the case, and where does that effort stand?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, there aren't any plans in this fiscal year to make improvements to this facility. There are discussing about improvements to the media equipment that we have. There are talks about the future of this room, but nothing has been settled at this point.
Commissioner Keller?
When you mentioned media in this room, there have been numerous complaints about sound and audibility of the Board of Architectural Review meetings. Is that a specific item, or is it in general that there's going to be refurbishment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, it's in general. I mean, I don't know that that item has been specifically identified at this point in time. We can certainly forward it. It's a, it would be a program under General Services that would be upgrading this room. But there are issues with the telecasting, and we need to come up to speed with the new technological requirements for that. So there's a variety of things that would be addressed in that, in that upgrade, but I'd have to look into whether or not, what's happening with the BAR and the ability for people to hear.
Thank you. I only mention that because people have complained to me about not being able to hear, and I would like to have that at the top of the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. As far as the item that Commissioner Keller just brought up with MBAR, and the only way you can participate is either in person or via audio, and audio listening to them, which I have many, many hours of tapes, it's impossible. And it is a community concern. And if there's a carve-out in the budget, this has been asked year after year after year. We have the room, and we have some video, some setup that could accommodate parts of it, certainly not the overhead with plans like the city has. But it would be most helpful. It's, you can't, you can't get up and look at the plans very easily, because it's just a table that's full of the members, and it's just, it's an important part of this community to know the projects that are going forward or proposed at MBAR level. So I would encourage, I think there was a cost estimate at one point about the upgrade would be, yes, Mr. Wilson, do you remember that at all in the past? Like 15,000 or something? Okay. So maybe someone could look into that and report back? Would be very helpful if you could have a cost estimate. I have spoken to Supervisor Williams about this, and he was hoping there could be, because he has heard this also. Time after time after time, this is an important decision-making body. And we should have the updates appropriate so the public can both watch streaming and archived. It's very helpful to the community. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Kupiec?
Much as I would wish that MBAR were streaming on television, even short of that, just to have a video recording that could be posted somewhere, that someone could tap into, there are more questions that come out about that. And I think, you know, having served on MBAR, the dialogue that goes on there about community projects tends to be pretty in-depth. And I think, you know, it would be very instructive to the community about what's going on if somehow they had access to, you know, a recording of that meeting. It's pretty critical.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller?
Oh, just to drive the nail in harder. It's not only a community service, but as Commissioners Chair Senour has said, frequently for our work, in order to review what's coming before us, we need to have that information. And if it's not accessible to us, it's also a real benefit for our decision-making. So, thank you.
We'll appreciate you getting back. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the Director's Report, et cetera? Comments? Thoughts? Seeing none? Well, to the, oh, to the project status update. Thank you.
Chair Senour, if we can just trail this, I think it's packaged in the debris flow presentation.
Of course. Thank you. So moving to the standard agenda, item number one.
Chair Senour, if it's, sorry to interrupt. If it's okay with you, I'd recommend if we could make some changes to the order on the agenda.
Of course.
I see that Fire Department has arrived, or two representatives from the Fire Department.
Of course.
If we could have them, that presentation first, then we can move to, on the first item, make it second.
Thank you. Is, did the Commissioners agree with that? Is there any?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Please. Could we have the representative? Thank you.
While the Fire Department is getting set up, I'll just read it until the Director rolls over.
Thank you very much.
So the Montecito Planning Commission received a report from the Montecito Fire Protection District regarding recently adopted amendments to the district's fire code.
Thank you very much.
Copy that.
Greetings. Welcome. Thank you for coming. If you could basically introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm happy to be here and present our update to the Montecito Fire Protection District Fire Code adoption process. My name is Aaron Briner. I'm the Fire Marshal at Montecito Fire Department. I've been with the district about 15 years. Two years ago, I moved off of an engine and headed up our FEMA CALOES reimbursement process. And then, a little over a year ago, I moved into my current position as the Battalion Chief Fire Marshal. And I currently oversee the Fire Prevention Bureau. Real quickly, I'm just going to go through my team. Without them, we wouldn't have the current code and that we have. So I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to that. Alex Brumman is here today with me. He's my Assistant Fire Marshal. He oversees everything that I don't want to do, basically. And then in addition to that, he oversees our whole permitting process. So our fire protection certificate, application process, and condition letter from start to finish. So all of the construction projects that go on in the district, he manages and ensures that the code is applied appropriately. Dana St. Ogre is our engineer inspector. He just started, actually, last week in this position. He performs all of our occupancy inspections. So the annual inspections of the hotels, schools, churches, residential care facilities, he'll go out and ensure on an annual basis that they're complying with all of the code requirements. Mae Juarez and Nick Elmquist come to us from, both from the Los Padres, with combined almost 50 years of fuels management and Forest Service experience. They are our wildland specialists and in charge of all of our we debatement process, our defensible space surveys, dead tree removal programs, our neighborhood chipping programs, as well as our fuel treatment network in the upper high road areas above 192. And are responsible for continuing the work over the last 30 years in that fuel treatment network that provided us the successes that we saw in the Thomas Fire. So all of them an integral part of my Bureau and of this code that I'm going to talk to you about today. So just a brief background on fire codes. The International Fire Code is what we call the Model Code. It's what all of our codes are built on. It's, it's been, it gets updated every three years, based on industry standards, recognized good practice within the industry, and then input from agencies such as ourselves and State Fire Marshal. The State Fire Code is adopted by the State Fire Marshal and basically takes that International Fire Code and applies the features of California that require adjustments or amendments to address specific, specific issues that California sees that maybe aren't addressed in the, in the more broad international code. And then moving on to the local code, all local jurisdictions perform their own code adoption as well, amendment, taking the local climatic, geographic, and topographic features in their area, so in Montecito, and ensuring that we have the relevant codes necessary to mitigate the risks in our jurisdiction. So we have the international, the state code, and then the local code. Every three years, this process occurs. So the 2016 California Fire Code was superseded in 2019, starting January 1, 2020. So in July, I was given the amended California Fire Code so that we could work to create our amendments for the local code. Went through that, that process. December 23, our Montecito Fire Protection District Board of Directors adopted our ordinance amending the California Fire Code, as well as the California Building Code and California Residential Code, creating the Montecito Fire Prediction, Protection District Fire Code. As I said before, it was, I'm new in the position. So six months into my position, I learned that I was going to be doing code adoption, and so I immediately reached out to all of the other Fire Marshals and Fire Prevention Officers and brought them all together, basically to ask a bunch of why. Why, why do you do this? Why do we do this? Why are we different? And it, you know, in the end, I obviously learned a lot, but there was some other benefits as well. And that was to help standardize across jurisdictions. Where I didn't receive a good answer to my why, why would, why were we different, then I changed and created a more consistent code that was useful for everyone, everyone through the whole process, ourselves included. So when contractors came in and carpenteria, and they had a completely different set of rules and standards, you know, compared to Montecito, I tried to limit those to areas where we had specific needs in Montecito that needed to be addressed. So that was the goal, was to simplify, make more consistent with the surrounding jurisdictions, and then to just have a collaborative working relationship with the surrounding jurisdictions. We, these are a few of the significant code changes. So California Fire Code from 2016 to 2019 had 167 amendments. So we needed to review all of those, ensure that we either agreed with them, or we wanted to further amend them. We had a total of 17 amendments in our Montecito Fire Protection District Code, and these are the four that I think were the most impactful. So fire apparatus access roads, we updated the access road design. Essentially, our previous code in 2016 delineated the width of fire access roads based on number of parcels. So a single parcel was 14 feet wide, two to four parcels was 16 foot wide, and so on. So in discussion with some of the surrounding agencies they had already, and so we added the verbiage dwelling unit. So we have now a single parcel or dwelling unit is 14 feet wide, two to four parcels or dwelling units is 16, and so forth. And the reason to capture that dwelling unit is that the idea is that when you have a single parcel, in general, they have a single permanent dwelling unit with one family legally able to reside there at any given time. And so that's the life load that we're looking at. With the addition of permanent, more permanent resident, residential dwelling units on single parcels, we recognize that, you know, we were expanding that. Our life load was expanding. We had difficulties with access and egress, and so we needed to, to adjust that required Automatic sprinkler systems, another area where I was able to kind of come in alignment with, with our neighboring agencies and simplify our process. So for all new one and two-family homes, the requirement is to sprinkler them within the fire code. So when you make alterations, additions, remodels, it gets a little more complicated, and each jurisdiction handles that process a little differently. So our, our calculation for triggering sprinklers was a little complicated, and so I wanted to simplify it so that it was straightforward, everyone understood. I can't tell you the number of times we had just calls trying, asking for us to explain, like how, can you please tell me, here's my project, is it going to trigger sprinklers? So this seems pretty straightforward. If you alter, and alteration is an addition or a remodel, 50% of the existing gross square footage of your home, or you reach the amount of 1,500 square feet, then it will trigger a sprinkler, fire protection sprinkler requirement. Emergency and standby power systems, this is a section that wasn't even in the 2016 California Fire Code. It has to do with the power walls, the backup battery power walls that are becoming commonplace in residential dwellings now. So it's, in its infancy, it's going to be something that we're going to have to keep our eye on as the technology improves and changes. So a lot of residents are opting for a battery backup... improves and changes. So a lot of residents are opting for a battery backup instead of a generator backup, and that just creates different problems. You know, generally, generators are off-site in their own location or in their own structure. Battery backups can be put anywhere, really. So it brought a lot of questions, more so than answers. So this was an area that we're highlighting, and we're going to continue to keep an eye on over the year to see if we need to make, continue to make changes. Explosives and fireworks was just something specific to Montecito where we added language based on direction from our Board of Directors to prohibit any fireworks displays in the fire district. In addition, just to keep in the theme of simplifying and consistency and making it easier for our constituents and the contractors and developers, we created development standards which help those individuals, the planners, the architects, and the homeowners in understanding our code and applying the code. So essentially, the ordinance is the requirement, tells you what your minimum distances are and when sprinklers are required. These development standards explain how to achieve that. So it's kind of a layperson's explanation of, you know, do you have questions about the roofing assembly? What constitutes a Class A roofing assembly or Class B? You can go to our development standards, and they walk you through that. So these are the areas that we felt were the places where people would have the most questions, or were the most complex. Our vegetation management standard was developed by Mae and Nick, our wildland specialists, and it addresses the landscape plans, the defensible space requirements, and everything having to do with vegetation management around the structures. Fire Department access is where it would describe what I described earlier, the minimum widths for particular driveway, or the slope, what the material is necessary, bridges, gates, everything surrounding our fire department access. Water supply and storage has to do with our actual fire district water supply for the fire sprinkler systems, as well as if there is an adequate Montecito water supply through the hydrants, you know, what type of storage is necessary. And then the fire sprinkler systems, residential commercial describes the structure, the system, how it should be built, what our testing process is for it, and our review process. Post-disaster rebuilds is a section that is actually pulled out of our fire protection plan from last year, and it was implemented post-T-Fire to essentially assist residents in getting back in their homes as quickly as possible. So obviously, it's a different circumstance where they didn't choose to perform an addition or remodel to their home. And so we afford them some variances where we can with the current required code in order to accommodate getting them back into their homes as soon as possible. So in conclusion, we successfully adopted a code. I was proud of that, my first code adoption. Hopefully, it'll all be as smooth next time. We were able to simplify our code, make more consistent with surrounding agencies with that collaboration that we performed, ensuring that the residents of Montecito have a code that best serves the community. This is, on our website, you have access to our ordinance, which is our adopted fire code, as well as all of those development standards, if you have questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Keller?
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that comprehensive report. And I do have a couple of questions. In terms of consistency with surrounding areas, I'm just wondering if within Montecito, where the topography varies enormously from the coastline to the hillside, are there any ordinances that apply differently depending on the area of Montecito? Or is everything the same for the entire fire district?
So, good question. It's essentially the same. There's very high fire hazard areas and high fire hazard areas that fall within the county. And that's actually all of Montecito. And so that would affect the vegetation management and defensible space features. But the short answer is, is access and defensible space and everything is applied consistently throughout the district.
Thank you. And in terms of the sprinkler system, I've heard of a number of instances where somebody who's putting in an ADU was also required to add sprinklers to their main house, even though no construction was being done. Is that an anomaly, or is that something that might be required if, in regard to the ADUs that are coming up the pipeline?
So I can't think of a case where we would require sprinklers to be installed in a main residence because of the addition of an ADU. It's, the state's very strict on what we can and can't apply, and how we apply our code to ADUs. And we're very limited in that. So our code would not require a main residence to be sprinkled for the addition or construction of an ADU. So I'm not sure.
Okay, this was maybe just an anomaly. Thank you. But on the battery backup, is that generator, or would that also be solar?
So it can be both. And I've seen both. So however, sometimes it is both. Sometimes, you know, we have one residence with generator and photovoltaic feeding that battery backup. So it's just, it runs the gamut. It's really kind of in its infancy, and so you'll see both of them. Generally, I would say it's solar to battery backup.
I beg your pardon?
Generally, I see, more often than not, it would be solar to the battery backup. But I've definitely seen generators to the battery.
Okay. You just mentioned generators, so I was wondering about solar. Thank you. And then lastly, is there, when you talk about the prohibition against fireworks, is there any kind of waiver or exclusion for fireworks that are offshore, that are in the water, or is it, how is that regulated?
So there is a process that the State Fire Marshal approves to go through fireworks displays in any area within California. But we have no waiver now. The direction from the Board of Directors of Montecito Fire Protection District was to not allow any fireworks displays onshore or offshore.
So you can prohibit offshore as far as you wish, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I believe Commissioner Newman was...
Thank you. First, I too thank you for coming today. This is a topic of importance to us and to our community. A couple of questions. With respect to the fire code changes, my understanding generally, based on my meeting with the chief, is that some of these changes exceed the requirements of state law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you share with us which ones those are amongst the few that are listed?
Sure. So all of the ones that I mentioned up there before, those four exceed state laws. I would have to, it would take me a little time to completely answer yet. But essentially, any amendment that we put through exceeds state law. You know, we, so that's the answer, I guess. All 17 of our amendments would alter, adjust, or exceed state law.
Okay, thank you for that. And just as a matter of curiosity, in the deliberative process by the Fire Protection District, I understand you had two meetings, one in November, and then one in December to discuss these. Was there any discussion about the cost impact of these code changes, for instance, with respect to a residential property?
We did do our public noticing and had two public meetings. We did not, we received three public comments from the building official. None of them related to cost. I don't know that Montecito Fire doesn't charge fees, so there's nothing that we do that would have affected fees in that respect. So cost specifically to, as it related to the changes, I don't know that we discussed them. I don't think that many of the changes were of a magnitude or of a substance that would affect costs. So to answer your question, not specifically.
Okay. And then, asking you to venture into Never Never Land with this a bit, because we're there too. With respect to ADUs, do all of these code amendments, the four listed here, obviously putting aside explosive and fireworks, apply to freestanding ADUs?
No, they don't. Like I mentioned before, we're very limited in our application. So we can't require sprinklers in ADUs unless they meet some other, for some other reason. For instance, if they can't create the access that we require, or they don't have the water flow that's required, then we can require sprinklers in those. But, so no, they're a special case, and they're dealt with separately. If the other, if the main residence, it works the opposite of what, which the example you described, Commissioner Keller, is if the current residence is sprinkled, then the ADU can be required to be sprinkled, but not the other way around. So there are a few ways that we can do it, but they are treated, they're treated special. And it's very, very specific and limited what we can apply.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, with respect to the development standards, which you list here and are intended to help the community, contractors, and so on, to understand more the desires of the fire district, are these advisory commentary, or do these development standards have in the eyes of the fire district the force of law?
No, they have the force of law. They're actually adopted by reference through our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Kupia.
So just out of curiosity, because I want to cherry pick just one thing. So the development standard that affects roofing assembly, how does what you've done differ from what the requirements are under the CBC, California Building Code, as far as what's a Class A assembly?
Sure.
Or is there a higher requirement for fireproofing roofs than CBC requires?
So, good question. It's, we're not doing anything to adjust the definition of a Class A or a Class B. It's just when it's required. So we don't allow Class B roofing. Santa Barbara County does. So Montecito will only allow a Class A roofing type. And then, the only other change we made was, they can, you can go up to 50% repair of your roof without having to change it into current code, Class A or B, whatever it may be. And we lowered that to 25%. So once you exceed 25% of a repair or an alteration to your roof, then you have to change out the whole roof to the current Class A requirement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you again for your excellent presentation. I have a few questions. Regarding solar, what purview do you have when, does the Fire Department have when a project with a re-roofing, say, wants to usher in the solar? I believe, too, architecturally, it's required by the state that new builds have solar. Do you know about that?
I don't know the answer to the last question. Your first question, we have limited say and concern over the installation of solar, especially roof-mounted PV systems. So the California Building Code, essentially, we've worked hand-in-hand with building and safety to ensure that the placarding and notifications on the panels, that's really our concern, are adequate. So we don't actually even review
You do not, okay.
Roof-mounted photovoltaic systems, unless they're tied to an ESS system, or, and we do review ground-mounted PV systems that are greater than 20 kilowatts. But that's essentially to ensure we have access, you know, that they're not putting it in a place where we wouldn't be able to access the building.
Thank you. Regarding the power walls and the battery packs, and they're being installed
Correct.
All over the place. And basically, oversight is nil at this point? Is that correct?
It's limited. Building, I mean, building and safety has oversight and ensures that the, you know, if there's a bollard, if they're placed inside of garages, they have the bollards, that we look at the same power shut-off. So it's just, the technology is even in its infancy. So it's hard to even develop, you know, standards and requirements in a technology that's so new.
So if it's after the fact, if the house is an older house, and the installation, is a permit required?
Yes.
Okay, permit?
Is permit required.
Okay, thank you. I have a question about the address number on a street. It's to be, I believe, six inches. You have the requirements of, but there are many residences that have none. And that is of import, from my discussions with the Fire Department, that it be displayed properly. But yet, probably 50% of the houses in Montecito have no visible address that you can see from the street. Is that a concern? Have you ever tried to sort of knock on doors or send letters saying it must be displayed, you know, because it's just, I'd say 50% don't.
So it is of concern. I hope it's not quite 50%. And, you know, coming off of an engine, it's something that I apply my code accordingly. It's easy to recognize, sitting from the captain's seat, what I needed. I need an adequate turnaround. I can't actually turn into this driveway. Where is the driveway? Where's the address? Which one are we going to? So I share your sentiment. It's, there's a lot of things to do. So we capture that with every permit that comes through. It's on our checkoff list. So anyone who pulls a permit that we actually go review, we do that. But as far as initiating that, we don't have a program or process to do that.
Could you put it on your website, a reminder?
Of course.
A display of your address is important critically to public safety and in the community as well as your own?
Yeah, absolutely. I have a goal of putting out, like, public service advisements, which talks about clearance around hydrants, addressing, you know, just kind of a low, down, and dirty development standard. So yes, it's a great idea.
One more question regarding private roads and rumble strips or bumps. As I understand, that's a carve-out. They can do on a, quote, "private" road, those things. Whereas on a county road, like in front of my street, it's, even though they speed, bumps are not rumble strips, but cannot be instituted because the Fire Department believes a safety issue as far as them responding. Is that correct? They are not allowable, except on private roads?
I don't know that I would say they're not allowable. I'd say all traffic calming devices are looked at in, on a case-by-case basis. But in general, a delay in response time, if we, in any type of traffic calming, whether it's bulbouts, or speed humps, or any of those that you'd mentioned, delay our response. And when you have a 40,000-pound vehicle, we essentially have to stop at each one of those things and go over. So it's a balance. It's a balance between the safety of the neighbors, neighborhood, with the speed that's going through there, and then a delay in our response time. And I guess we take the stance of, in, or I have historically in general, of not supporting those because I know, well, again, we work with traffic engineering. I'm on the traffic engineering committee. And we address each one individually. And if there's information that they can present, and they always do a study in those areas, and if there's excessive speed, excessive accidents beyond the norm, then we would support some sort of traffic calming. But without that support, then in general, we err on the side of a delayed response is known, and it would be detrimental to the community. And so we would oppose those traffic calming devices.
Thank you. Commissioner Belice, you have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry I didn't ask earlier, but I wanted to ask you, in reference, you made reference to the width of roads in relationship to size of parcels, or the quantity of parcels, from 14 to 16. And I imagine that might affect turnouts and abilities to pass. Did you, do you differ with the county with this regulation?
Yeah, the county is actually more strict. So they just adopted all of Appendix D, which allows them to essentially have 20-foot fire access roads. So I'd have to look at what their driveway widths are. I'm not sure what it is. But we're in alignment with Carp Summerland now, as far as our widths. But I don't know what counties, I don't know what Santa Barbara County's specific driveway width ordinance is.
Okay. And one more question. So do you have a distance or a length of road before you have a turnout that allows for passage of vehicles or your equipment?
Yes, we do.
And what is that?
Every 200 feet, we have a required turnout. And every 400 feet, we have a required turnaround.
Oh, okay. That's different than the county.
That was different from the county.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments, thoughts? Thank you so much. It was an excellent presentation. I would like to say, I think it would be appropriate and informative if we could have the website. If you could, is the website here?
Yeah, the website, that's the link to our
Okay, and the general website to be informed about board meetings, et cetera, is just montecito-fire.com?
Fire.com, correct.
Okay, and monthly board meetings, all that, committee meetings, it's very, very important for the community to be dialed into that. And I think often, it's one of those departments and agencies that somehow just doesn't get attendance at these things. The other question I have is, there has been discussion about a possible microgrid at, a development at, with starting at fire? I'm, I'm not sure. Can you, at the building, or, do you have any information on that?
I have limited information on that. I know there was a discussion about the microgrid and incorporating the water district and, and the fire district as well as Montecito Union School. I don't, I don't know where that's at. I, I believe, well, we are moving forward, we, we have to replace our generator post Thomas Fire and Debris Flow, and as part of that project, we are incorporating solar into that. I don't know if it's going to be part of the microgrid project, but we will be, we built, we'll be adding solar to our, to our facilities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you again, and if I may, address staff on this topic. If it is not already there, and I don't believe that it is, I think it would be a wonderful addition to our county planning site to have the Montecito Fire Department's link to its code and requirements posted so that those seeking to develop or explore the possible development of properties in the Montecito planning area could also be advised at the county website of the additional requirements that the fire district has imposed. I think that'd be a worthy addition to our website, if we can accommodate that, please.
Seeing no more questions, comments, or thoughts? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in, it was very informative. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one quick recommendation is, I see there's a lot of people for public comment, probably want to open it up for public comment.
Yes, thank you. Public comments, anyone? Seeing none, closed public comment. Thank you very much.
No public comment.
Moving forward, the, yes, thank you. We're moving, let's say that. Standard agenda, 2019 comprehensive plan, annual progress report. I, I would like to, just before you start, please, there was a reversal of pages in the packet we got, and it was just that the, the three punch holes were reversed on page three and four. So, when you read it, it, it just jumped around to page four instead of three. So, page two, so I'm just saying, it is, needs to be reversed. If you're, I'm sure that will be addressed here, but it was just a matter of putting that, putting it together where it got reversed. So, page two, three, four, and five, I just reversed, yeah.
I went through it unnoticed.
Okay, thank you. Please, yeah, thank you.
Have you read it?
Before, how long would you plan the staff begins their presentation? Let me just read it into the record really quick. All right, thank you. Staff is requesting that the Montecito Planning Commission receive and file the 2019 comprehensive plan annual progress report, and recommends that the Montecito Planning Commission follow the procedures outlined below in order to provide, by April 1st, 2020, the 2019 comprehensive plan annual progress report to the Board of Supervisors, Governor's Office of Planning and Research, California Department of Housing and Community Development, and the City of Santa Barbara. Madam Chair, before we begin, I'd just like to take a moment just to introduce the staff that's here.
Thank you.
To my left is Ms. Karina Vin, Vinegas, sorry. You know, I was practicing and I just messed up. So, anyway, to my left is Ms. Karina Vinegas. She's, this is her first time presenting to the Montecito Planning Commission. She's been waiting almost two years to come and present to you, and so she's excited for this opportunity. And then we also have a supervising planner, David Lackey, that's here, as well as the deputy director, Dan Clement, that's here to present this item to you. I just want to introduce the, the staff to you.
Thank you very much, welcome. We love to have you. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Chair Sennauer and Commissioners. My name again for the record is Karina Vinegas, and this morning I will be presenting the 2019 comprehensive plan annual progress report. The annual progress report, also referred to as the APR, is a state-manded report that provides information regarding the status of the county's comprehensive plan and progress in its implementation, as well as the county's progress in meeting its regional housing needs allocation, also known as RENA, in calendar year 2019. Government Code Section 65400 requires the county to submit the annual progress report to the Board of Supervisors, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st of each year. The county also submits the report to the City of Santa Barbara in accordance with policies in the Mission Canyon Community Plan. The 2019 annual progress report shows that the county continues to make progress in maintaining and implementing the comprehensive plan, especially the 2015-2023 housing element update. The housing element contains 37 programs to help meet the housing goals and needs of the unincorporated county. The county made progress towards implementing three of these programs in 2019, which are listed on this slide. In addition, Table D of Attachment 1 to the annual progress report provides information on the status of these and other active programs. The county also initiated updates to the circulation element and safety element in This slide provides a list of projects that the county worked on in 2019 which affect portions of Montecito. Some of the projects noted with CZO only affected the Colso zone portion of Montecito. The annual progress report also summarizes the county's progress in meeting its RENA for the 2015-2023 housing element period. RENA progress is determined by the number of building permits that the county issued for net new housing units for calendar year 2019. This includes permits issued for housing units such as single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, accessory dwelling units, and agricultural employee dwellings. But it does not include replacement units such as disaster rebuilds or group quarters such as dorms. The annual progress report reports the estimated affordability level of each unit based on the 2019 state income limits, which are adjusted for household size, and based on available local housing data. The local housing costs are researched and estimated by zip code. Therefore, the affordability of most units depends on their location. In some areas of the county, even small units are not affordable to lower-income households. Therefore, the county cannot automatically assume that all accessory dwelling units and agricultural employee dwellings are affordable by design. This table shows the number of building permits that the county issued for new housing units organized by income category within the unincorporated county from calendar years 2014 to 2019. The last row of the table shows the county's RENA for each income category for the planning period. As you can see, in 2019, the county issued building permits for 242 new housing units, which is a decrease from the 328 units permitted in 2018. The county has exceeded its RENA for the moderate and above-moderate income categories within the first half of the planning period. In that same time, the county has met 84% of its low-income RENA, but only 36% of its very-low income RENA. At this point in the housing element planning period, the county should be at least 50% to its RENA for the very-low income category. As shown in the second to last row, the county has issued permits for 58 very-low and 89 low-income units in total. But most of these units came from a large affordable housing projects in 2015 and accessory dwelling units in 2018 and 2019. If the, the county continues this trend of permitting only a few very-low income units every year, it will continue to fall further behind on meeting its RENA and remain subject to SB 35, which I will discuss in a later slide. This graph shows the same information as the previous slide, the number of building permits that the county issued for new housing units from 2014 to 2019 organized by income category. The last set of columns on the right shows the county's total RENA for the planning period, which is 661 units. At 776 units, the county has far exceeded its above-moderate RENA of 284 units. The county has also exceeded its moderate RENA of 112 units with 274 permitted units. However, the county has only issued permits for 58 very-low income units, or 36% of its RENA. The county should be at the 50% mark with at least 80 very-low income units. To get back on track and meet these targets, the county must issue building permits for at least 100 new very-low and four low-income housing units by the end of 2020. Of the 242 units permitted in 2019, 40 were located in Montecito. They included 22 accessory dwelling units, seven single-family dwellings, and 11 multifamily units. All of the Montecito units were affordable to above-moderate income households. The general location of these new housing units are shown as red dots on this map. SB 35 establishes a mandatory streamlined ministerial approval process for qualifying housing developments in jurisdictions that have not met their pro-rata share of RENA or have not submitted annual progress reports. In June 2018, State HCD determined that the county was subject to SB 35 streamlining due to insufficient progress toward meeting its lower-income RENA. HCD will release SB 35 determinations annually in June, which will take into account permit data from the previous year's annual progress report. SB 35 streamlining applies to qualifying housing developments that contain at least 50% affordable units and are located on urban infill sites. These projects are subject to ministerial objective planning standards. To plan for potential development, LRP will continue processing objective design standards for SB 35 projects in 2020. Preparation of the annual progress report is an administrative activity that does not authorize new development or otherwise result in physical changes to the environment. Therefore, the preparation and submittal of this report is not a project, and it is not subject to CEQA. To conclude, staff recommends that your commission take the following actions. Receive and file the 2019 comprehensive plan annual progress report. Determine that the preparation and submittal of this report is an activity that is not subject to CEQA. And lastly, recommend that the county planning commission authorize staff to provide the annual progress report to the Board of Supervisors, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, State HCD, and the City of Santa Barbara. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Keller?
Yes, thank you very much. That was very clear. The one thing I don't understand, though, is there any penalty for not reaching the RENA for not complying? What is the, what, what is done? How was, how will the community be impacted if they don't reach these levels?
Chair Sennauer and Commissioner Keller, the penalty would essentially be less local control over those ministerial projects, and will be continued to be subject to SB 35. I can provide a little bit more clarification and provide a follow-up to that question.
By saying less local control, you're suggesting that projects will somehow be appealed to another level and therefore be allowed, even if they, I'm just, I don't, I don't understand what the downside is. And it sounds like staff maybe doesn't have a clear answer, or maybe you could suggest the process that occurs when we don't meet these levels?
Chair Sennauer, Commissioner Keller, if I could just chime in there at this point. So, as Ms. Vinegas indicated, the loss of local control comes in a couple forms. So, for example, she already described to you the SB 35 ramifications of us not meeting our very-low and low-income categories, that is the RENA numbers. So, the projects which typically would have a discretionary component over them, if they meet the qualifications of SB 35 by including a minimum number of affordable housing units, they get a ministerial streamlined process by which we do not get the authority to exercise discretion when determining whether or not to approve that project. So, a lot of things like design control, design review, things like that would go away, or be very limited to the point where it's only an objective sort of consideration. The second effect, too, is we're now gearing up for the next round of RENA cycles as a part of our next housing element update. Our housing element is going to expire in 2023. So, SB CAG is already working, looking at the numbers that would be assigned to each one of the jurisdictions. The likely result is, we're going to have to provide even more affordable housing to make up for this deficiency in our current housing cycle. So, there's going to be more requirements, more need for more affordable units at the very-low and low-income categories, and we're just going to see larger numbers. So, it's going to be more and more difficult for us to meet those requirements over time.
I understand your explanation, thank you. But that means that the ones that do include these elements will be streamlined. But is there any, any way to force projects that do not include these elements to include them in order to be improved? I guess that's the question I was asking.
Actually, Commissioner Keller, could you repeat the question or statement, please?
Well, you're saying, you're, you're suggesting that we lose control in, I mean, that projects that do include the very-low and low-income have a ministerial approval and are streamlined and sent through the pipeline. I'm just asking if a project comes in that wants to be approved to be built and doesn't include these elements, is there any way that they can be forced to include these elements in order to be approved?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair, no.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, in terms of affordable, this is the SB 35 is, is statewide. So, does it take into account variations in locality in terms of what is affordable? How is the affordability measured?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair, yeah. Affordability is actually defined as part of the housing element update, and that will define the various income categories and what qualifies as affordable and not affordable. And there's a methodology we use whereby we take a look at what is being charged, we do a calculation to see what is considered to be affordable based upon, once again, the various income categories that are established by the housing element update and those various income categories.
I'm sorry, so that means Santa Barbara county-wide, city-wide, is, is the affordability component for our area? I mean, does it take into account how different that is from UCAIPA, for example? I'm just wondering, it's not a statewide standard, right? Or is it?
Actually, let me ask, invite Ms. Jessie Steele to provide commentary. She can provide you a little bit more information, or perhaps Ms. Vinegas also could talk a little bit more about the methodology used for determining affordability.
Who, who wants to go first?
Good morning.
If you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Jessie Steele. I'm a planner with the county's Long Range Planning Division, and I've been working primarily on our housing projects. So, with SB 35, you were asked So, with SB-35, you were asking if the affordability level is determined at a statewide level or on a local level? Is that correct?
Statewide, countywide, statewide.
Right. So, affordability is determined at the local level. So, we would establish our income limits through the Housing Element, and then every year, the State Department of Housing and Community Development helps us update those, depending on, you know, local variations in housing data, or, you know, sometimes they'll just adjust the affordability amounts, but it's usually very little, and they're set within the Housing Element to start.
Thank you. So, that is countywide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newman, you're next. I just want to follow up, if I could. On page 13, it has of the report, the household income limits, very-low, low-income, et cetera, the table referenced. Is that the construct of which we were talking now regarding affordability?
Chair Sennar, yes. That is what we would use to determine affordability.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Going to the staff report first, to page three, please, at the top. It's mentioned that summarizes three programs listed in Chapter 5, and of course, there's more discussion about progress with respect to these three. Are there any other items in Chapter 5 as to which progress has or has not been made that are not referenced here?
Commissioner Newman through the chair, yes. If you refer to Attachment 1, Table D, there will be a list of the total of 37 programs from the Housing Element, and it provides their status updates as well. Yes, it would be Attachment 1, Table D.
Just for my reference, and I apologize, I could not read, for instance, these colored tables. Are you referring to one of those, which are completely illegible to us?
Not with a magnifying glass, which I did. Thank you, and addition besides. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I would require a microscope.
I apologize. Yes, unfortunately, that is how the state's Excel forms print, but they are available digitally. But, yes, so it is a Table D of Attachment 1. I can actually just give you a quick peek.
And what elements of progress is the heading?
So, these are the other elements of code section and a report on the progress or lack thereof on each of them? Is that the understanding?
Yes, so these are updates to the 37 programs that are in the Housing Element.
All right, thank you. With respect to, again, staff report, page 3, perhaps I missed it, could you fill us in with respect to the items referenced in footnote 1, an update with respect to the
Commissioner Newman through the chair. So, that footnote was in reference to the ordinance amendments for the coastal zone regarding agricultural employee dwellings that your commission had seen last year. So, just this past week, it was at the Coastal Commission, they did approve the board's submittal of the LCP amendments. The next step will be, for all coastal amendments, comes back to the Board of Supervisors to consider the modifications that were approved and certified by the Coastal Commission. Tentatively, we've got, scheduled to take that back to the Board of Supervisors on April 7th, and then, as all bureaucratic process happen, there's one final step that after, then we, then the board's action is then submitted to the Executive Director of the Coastal Commission, and then at the next hearing, if it's accepted, then it's in place at that time. So, we anticipate that those amendments will be in force in the coastal zone probably by May of this year.
Okay, thank you for that. Let me direct your attention now to page 1 of the Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress The third paragraph, I'm sorry, fourth, from the top, or second from the bottom, says "The MPC, CPC, and Board oversee implementation of the Comprehensive Plan." Could you enlighten me as to how and when we've done that in the past year?
Commissioner Newman through the chair, management or implementation of the Comprehensive Plan comes in a number of forms. It can be everything from what we're doing right here as part of this annual progress report to the various programs that are included in the Comprehensive Plan to implement or actualize the objectives or the goals stated in the Comprehensive Plan. So, for example, the agricultural employee dwelling ordinance amendments that we just processed, that's implementing a portion of the Housing Element. That is how we maintain the Comprehensive Plan. And then also, as you're aware, every year we present the upcoming work program to your commission, the planning commission, County Planning Commission and the board. At those times, you have the opportunity to review our progress and what we've completed in addition to what you're doing today, and provide us with guidance about what you believe needs to be in the Comprehensive Plan for the following fiscal years.
Thank you for that answer, and that is a good segue into my next question. In going through the entirety of the APRs, as you all refer to it in your lexicon, I find that 97% of it roughly has nothing to do with the Montecito planning area at all. And I'm wondering if staff could guide us a bit as to those items that are specifically referenced that do pertain to the Montecito planning area? So, maybe, for instance, starting on paragraph 3, page 5 of the report. I'm referring to the APR itself.
Commissioner Newman through the chair. In reference to page 5, you can see on the slide that I have up right now, these are the projects that are within Montecito, and then also, the ones that are noted with CZO are portions within the coastal zone. So, when you're looking through the APR document itself, it has these projects that are also included on this slide, as well as all of the countywide projects. But the ones on this slide indicate those that are within Montecito, if that provides a little bit more clarification.
Okay. And, thank you, that's helpful. If you could leave that slide up there, that would be useful for our guidance. And let me go to page 11 of the APR. Something that's, I don't see listed on your Slide 4, but in the second paragraph down on utility, scale, solar ordinance amendments, it is suggested that the Land Use Development Code and potentially the Montecito Land Use Development Code be amended. What is the suggestion there, and what does that refer to in the context of utility, scale, solar ordinance amendments, which is not listed on Slide 4?
Commissioner Newman through the chair. So, to clarify, so, as explained in the description there, there was a strategic energy plan that the Community Services Department prepared and prepared to the Board of Supervisors. And whereas this specific project initially started as just a utility-grade solar ordinance amendment project, after the time at which the board gave us the direction to commence with that project, there was further consideration mainly in terms of the strategic energy plan, and the board has now given us broader direction to take our energy policies further, not look at just utility-grade solar, but then also look at other types of energies. So, they've kind of expanded the scope of what they originally intended us to do. And as part of that strategic energy plan, one of the things it did is it tried to identify generally where the various types of alternative energy production and resources could be provided in the county, given the needs and demands of the particular energy development. So, as part of that, there are areas identified as potential areas for utility-grade solar. Some of those could possibly be located in Montecito or within the coastal zone. But if you read the strategic energy plan, it does caution that, you know, because of, for example, things like the Coastal Commission certification process, it's going to be more difficult or challenging to get things established there. So, what we now need to do is go down to a more granular level than what that strategic energy plan provided, and look at specific sites that may accommodate utility-grade solar. We haven't gotten to that point yet, and we don't want to throw out the possibility that there may be sites, for example, in Montecito, or, for example, in the coastal zone, which may be appropriate for what we're considering. But, once again, we're not there yet. So, that's why we're saying there's a possibility, but we definitely have not identified specific sites, so we're not willing to say it's definitely going to affect the Montecito Land Use and Development Code or the coastal zone portion of Montecito.
I appreciate that. Just by way of follow-up, when you talk about sites within Montecito for solar, are you talking about sites for the county to install, or who would be the installer or owner? Are we talking about private residences? Are we talking about commercial properties within Montecito, governmental, or all of the above?
Commissioner Newman through the chair, all of the above. Everything's on the table.
So, it might be appropriate, would you suggest, to include on Slide 4, the addition of utility, scale, solar ordinance amendments?
Yeah, I should say, yeah, Assistant Director Wilson, Secretary Wilson, just pointed out a good point. This is 2019 project, so this is looking back, not looking forward. So, although, in theory, that would have been considered if we actually got to that point in the utility-grade solar ordinance this year, but we haven't gotten that far. So...
I think that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Kupia?
You know, having a report like this to kind of understand what's going on countywide is very useful. But, you know, if I want to dial back to what Charles said, you know, just so people have a perspective on really what we're talking about, very little of what's in this report actually applies to Montecito. I mean, land values kind of prohibit us participating. And I'm just looking at the chart. So, of the 40 units of housing that we produced, all of it is in above-moderate income housing. 22 are ADUs, which I think will continue on and remain under the jurisdiction of state code and SB-35 for, probably forever. And in terms of the 11 multifamily dwelling units that have been created, I'm trying to think about where the hell they could be. Sorry, pardon me. But, you know, living here, I just don't know where multifamily housing happens, and it rarely happens. I don't know how that formula gets changed, even in the perspective of regionally what's close to Montecito. I mean, it's a kind of one clear indicator to me that some of the numbers that we're generating, because I guess one of the questions that I have is, in the very-low and low-income housing units that have been developed in the county, where are they? And I just want to follow up to that, you know, just so that people have kind of grasped what this means, is that everything that we try to do to build housing that is sustainable and diminishes traffic and brings worker-force housing back to Santa Barbara is almost unachievable, you know, within the circumstances that we currently have. So, I don't see low-income housing being built in Montecito because no developer's going to do it. They're just not going to make the numbers pencil backwards when they're doing, I mean, they don't even want, they won't even go for the bonus because it just doesn't make sense in terms of their initial infrastructure costs to build. So, I'm not sure how the county creates programs that really incentivizes that, because so far, it just hasn't been. Some has happened downtown when, for example, when we're really doing, not accessory dwelling units, but adjustable unit density projects, which always have a tremendous amount of consternation in every neighborhood that they get built. But, you know, there's, as Charles said, I mean, this is a fascinating read, but 97% of it doesn't even apply to Montecito. But the where they occur and how we incentivize a good housing mix, and how the county participates in that is certainly something that I'm very interested in.
Commissioner Kupia through the chair. To answer your question as far as those accessory dwelling units, those are mainly located within the Lompoc and Santa Maria area for the ones that are designated as low-income.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Keller?
Thank you. If you may, if you would, I think it would be helpful if we went over these Montecito projects one by one, just because, for example, the ADU amendments you mentioned. However, as of January 1st, there are no ADU amendments. We are bound by state law. And on some of these situations, like the ECAP, honestly, I was not able to find an interpretation of that acronym. So, I would really appreciate if you would go project by project, I mean, item by item, since these are projects within Montecito.
There has been a request to take before we take it item by item to have a five-minute break. Would that be suitable to anyone?
I didn't anticipate this would be a very long discussion.
This was just a request.
Just do it.
Five minutes? Thank you. Thank you.
Anticipating, taking those thresholds to the Board of Supervisors in early summer in the goal of getting them operative as close to July 1st as possible. After that occurs, then we are going to crack open the circulation element and work on policies, objectives, new standards, given the new standards that the state has adopted with regard to, once again, reduction of vehicle miles traveled. This is a huge change. This is a paradigmatic change for planning. This is, this, housing, climate change, those are the three big issues that are driving planning these days. So this is a very important project on which we're going to be working for the next couple of years. With regard to the coastal resiliency zoning ordinance amendments, just about two weeks ago, we received the Coastal Commission staff's suggested modifications to the board adopted coastal zoning ordinance amendments, excuse me, the local coastal program amendments. And there were some significant changes that the Coastal Commission staff is recommending, and we're currently working through those. We have a deadline of presenting those to the Coastal Commission for certification, and that must occur in, it has to be completed by May. The problem at this point, though, is there are definitely some modifications in there that we believe that the Board of Supervisors will find to be objectionable. So we now have to make the calculation as to what we're going to do. We're very likely going to go back to the Board of Supervisors and present to the Board the modifications that we believe that the Board probably would not accept, and then take that information back to the Coastal Commission, and then we're going to figure out what we're going to do with that project. Because at that point, because the deadline to certify must occur in May, the only real option, if we can't come to some sort of agreement by that point in time, is we would have to withdraw our application, try to work out the areas of disagreement, and then resubmit to the Coastal Commission, which would start another round of certification.
Thank you, Commissioner Paliyec.
Yes, regarding this coastal resiliency project, I'm curious about how SBK, Caltrans, the county assess the impact of the possible rise in the sea level. And regarding our Montecito, we have the bathtub freeway, and it didn't work very well during the mudslides. And I'm curious, has there been any new recommendations to alter the possible design in regards to this project that we're coming towards this 101 that might affect this comment here as far as coastal resiliency? It's a big statement, but...
I definitely don't know the specific detail, design details of that project. What I can tell you, though, is that sea level rise and vulnerability was one amongst a number of considerations when they're designing that project. They have to, as part of, for example, the environmental document, they had to analyze that. But we would have to get more information. If there's a specific question, we could go, hold the planners and try to answer that, but I don't have the specific...
Here's my question. My question is, only in Montecito do we have a freeway that's subterranean in nature. You know, Galita doesn't have it, Santa Barbara doesn't have it, we have it. And I just have not heard any special consideration for sea level rise for our freeway in Montecito.
Yeah, I should also state that sea level rise, well, this project just deals with sea level rise vulnerability by itself. What we're also working on, which is that second to last bullet on the right-hand side of the screen, is a safety element update, and that is a much more robust vulnerability analysis that will occur for the entire county, not only in the coastal zone but outside of the coastal zone. And it's as part of that where you're likely going to see more specific policies, programs to address the items like what you're describing right now, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Newman.
If I may add something to Commissioner Paliyec's inquiry, if my recollection serves me correctly, in 2018, the question of sea level rise and the appropriate recommendations to be made with respect to that came before us. It was the unanimous decision of the Montecito Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Supervisors and to the County Planning Commission that the highest possible level of sea rise, not the moderate 1B, adopted. That was adopted by us, it was rejected by the County Planning Commission, but it was accepted unanimously by the Board of Supervisors. As respect to the 101 in particular, the sea level rise level forecast to 2100 being at the highest level projected now by the county mirrors the sea level rise projections of Caltrans, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the NOAA. So of course, with respect to the 101, Caltrans will be determining actually the planning requirements and so on for the 101 itself. But that's the general background with respect to our activities and efforts in sea level rise, if that helps you.
Okay, with that said, moving right along, with regard to the Energy and Climate Action Plan, or ECAP as we refer to it, this actually has been taken on primarily by the Community Services Department. You might be aware of the recent assessment that was done of the existing ECAP and our measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions unfortunately found that it was not achieving its goals, and whereas supposed to achieve a reduction in GHG emissions, we actually saw an increase over the reporting period. So we have our work cut out for us, and what we're currently doing is working with the Community Services Department, who once again is taking the lead on drafting an updated Energy and Climate Action Plan. And they've taken a new approach in the sense that they have, they're working with all of the various jurisdictions within the county on this more regional collaborative effort. And then, in addition to that, a complementary component will be the county-specific Energy and Climate Action Plan, which will actually specify how we, the county, is going to achieve those goals that will be identified in that broader regional perspective of the other plan. This is going to be a multi-year project. Once again, we are now playing more of a supportive role to the Community Services Department. We'll be looking at things like making sure that this is set up such that we can rely upon it for our SEQA analysis of individual projects, as the SEQA guidelines allows us to do, so.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Yeah, within the monitoring that went on, did you have, was there any indication or understanding of why greenhouse gas emission increased? Was it population, more traffic?
Yes.
What were the contributing factors that created an increase rather than a decrease?
Yes, I encourage all of you to go back, actually watch the presentation of the Board. I can get the date for you, it's a good presentation. And it's primarily vehicle miles traveled. We don't have the infrastructure to support getting people out of their automobiles to get them up here to go to work. We don't have the housing here such that people are located where they work, so it's gone up and up. And that's not surprising. For example, SB CAG's Regional Transportation Plan has consistently shown, despite all of the various efforts that are being put into multimodal forms of transportation, we're just going to see more automobiles on the roads. And it's bearing out, so.
I agree.
Okay, with regard to the general package ordinance amendments, your commission considered those fairly recently. Those had a number of components. The coastal zoning ordinance component still needs to be certified. This was a disparate bundle of ordinance amendments, which consisted everything, two changes in the small wireless facilities, telecommunications facilities, which were designed to reflect current interpretations and current federal law. We also did some streamlining. This doesn't apply to Montecito, but for the Land Use and Development Code, we had a number of coastal regulations that were never certified, so we removed those. So those were adopted by the Board this year, and once again, the Coastal Commission is considering the certification of those amendments. With regard to the safety element update, similar to the circulation element update, this is a multi-year project, and it consists of a few phases. First off, we're going through the vulnerability assessment phase, where we're going to need to assemble a team of experts to go out and map out, and this is getting to your question, Commissioner Paliyec, with regard to identifying those areas that are vulnerable. And then second phase would be then coming up with a plan to address those vulnerabilities and plan for future development such that they are no longer in those vulnerable conditions. And then finally, with regard to short-term rentals...
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Sorry. Regarding, back to the safety element update, on page nine, the last, in the last, start of the last paragraph, the county has been, has assembled a stakeholder group consisting of county developments to advise the project, and on RFP, it continues. What is the stakeholder group consist of? I think particularly since the reference was flooding, wildfire, debris flow, et cetera, it does reference Montecito particularly, along with other communities. But what stakeholder group are you referencing, or, excuse me?
Yes, Chair Senna, and I should explain that this is just one amongst a number of groups we're going to compile as a part of this project. This is the technical stakeholder group, which consists primarily of county employees who manage the various facilities that are mostly involved with, you know, public safety events. So for example, it's people like the fire department, representatives from the Office of Emergency Management, public works for all of the various flood control facilities, gosh, going down the list, there's so many involved, ag commissioners involved, public health and safety, there's a lot of folks. And once again, this is more just for the technical advice and guidance, and they will help with, for example, when we bring the consultant onboard to perform the vulnerability assessment, they can help them identify the critical infrastructure that needs to be evaluated as part of that analysis.
And then at the top, on page 10, it says CCVA, including stakeholder, and community outreach will be completed by the end of 2020. So that's something that will be in the works, and there will be, because this is of great import to the community.
Absolutely.
And the county. So that will be basically on the website, or the outreach will be, how will it sort of pursue a path so the community actually can participate?
We will perform a multi-pronged attack, so to speak, so we'll try to get the word out using all forums. In fact, we'll probably want to, we'll probably be coming to your commission just to let you know what's going on, so that you can get the word out, invite you to attend.
Thank you.
Get people out there, so. Okay, short-term rentals. So as you probably recall, the Board did adopt short-term rentals ordinances, which are already affecting inland areas. The portion which applied to the coastal zone required Coastal Commission certification, but the Coastal Commission rejected the coastal short-term rental ordinance, due primarily to the fact that they felt it was too limiting and restrictive. And the Coastal Commission looks at short-term rentals as an affordable option for access to the beach, so they wanted a more permissive ordinance. So the Board of Supervisors has instructed us to go back and work on further revisions to the ordinance, to try to come up with something that both the county and the Coastal Commission could accept. So what we're looking at are, we've done the research on the various types of short-term rental ordinances that have been actually certified by the Coastal Commission, looking at what the Board, your commission has requested, what the County Planning Commission has requested, and try to find something in there that will work, and we will return to you with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman.
Two questions on that topic. One, as I asked the Director, when do you think that will see the light of day and appear before us in terms of ordinance amendments? And number two, since this has been a struggle and kind of a game of ping-pong between the Coastal Commission and the county, I would suggest that staff maybe focus its efforts on those communities that have had their short-term rental ordinances approved by the Coastal Commission, and then reverse engineer what we need here, because it's clear that what the county has desired didn't pass muster with them, so maybe reverse engineering that would be the best course, because we've got to get guidance to our community, and we need to make sure that what we promulgate will go through the Coastal Commission without problem.
Yeah, Commissioner Newman, through the chair, sorry, I clearly didn't articulate what we're doing, because that's exactly what we're doing right now. When I said we were looking at the other ordinance, is to see what was actually certified by the commission. We're looking at what worked for them, and we're going to try to see if that would work for us, too. And with regard to the timing, right now it's on hold due to staffing, and you'll get much more information about this when I present the work program next month. But yes, right now we're trying to staff up. We also have brought on consultants to help us out. Likely, we're not going to be able to start this up in earnest, probably until about the start of the next fiscal year, it's looking like right now.
Maybe, if I could suggest, some of these short-term renters are growing cannabis, it might move up on your agenda.
Commissioner Keller.
I just wanted to thank you very, very much. That summary and review was excellent help for us, and also for anybody who's viewing this, and people do actually watch these hearings, and they don't have immediate access to the staff report. It was a very, very good way to describe specifically what's going on in Montecito. And I just have one question that's a little conjectural, so maybe it's outside our scope, but the recent bill that was defeated, and the defeat was embraced by our state Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, the one that was introduced specifically for greater density in housing, most probably to solve problems in the urban areas, but would have had a widespread California effect. Do you have any update on that? Do you know if that's coming back in any form? And how would that have affected Santa Barbara? I'm sorry, that is a long question. I apologize, but I'm just curious as to how the planning department anticipated by having to deal with this.
Yes, Commissioner Keller, through the chair. So yeah, SB 50 is the bill, I believe, to which you're referring. That was the housing bill sponsored by Senator Weiner and others. And it did not make it, it did not pass. It's dead for the current legislative session. Whether or not some form of it is resurrected in future legislative sessions, that's yet to be seen. This was a carryover from the previous legislative session, where they held off on taking action because of its controversy, and Senator Weiner tried to work with the other legislators to try to address the concerns with the previous or early iterations of that bill. Unfortunately, he was unsuccessful, unfortunately for him, depending on what your goals are. He was unsuccessful. Salwin's dead for now. It was a very dense bill, and I have to admit, when I read the most current iteration of that bill, when Senator Jackson was going to go onto the floor to go speak on it, I'm not exactly sure the precise implications of that bill for Santa Barbara County. It definitely had a lot in there, which we would have to take a look at, but what I found to be most interesting were kind of the attempts to get at gentrification that has occurred, and taking into consideration, like trying to locate affordable housing projects in these jobs-rich communities. I think we likely would have had a number of communities, such as Montecito, which probably would have qualified as a jobs-rich community, which, from my reading of the bill, would have allowed for certain types of projects to have certain, once again, those ministerial streamlining procedures, where if they had a certain amount of affordable component provided and other amenities to meet certain standards, they would get that much more streamlined ministerial review. But once again, that did not pass, so I don't know what's going to happen at this point, so.
I appreciate you giving us your opinion, because since it has been brought up several times, it's going to be continued to be brought up, and it would be nice to, I thought it would be good to know what that might be in terms of implications for Montecito. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. I have one more question, referencing short-term rentals and the coastal zone, historical overlay zone. You're addressing that as far as particularly that the Coastal Commission couldn't support, basically. And that overlay was where? Can you reference that again? It was around the Miramar, is that, no, 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 but in general. It was, it was the quote historic area of Montecito, and the beach community around Eucalyptus, et cetera, et cetera. It was a small, I'm just trying, it, this does reference specifically that overlay zone and no other overlay zone, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. So I should clarify that the ordinance, it was written such that short-term rentals, where the owner of the property didn't have to be onsite whilst being used as a short-term rental, would have been limited to that overlay zone you just described. However, home stays would have been allowed elsewhere, anywhere throughout the coastal zone. So, yeah, it's roughly the Miramar area going up to the 101 to the north and to the east. Gosh, I need a map.
That's fine. I'm only bringing it up because it's not a general term. It's very specific to...
It was.
To Montecito and historic, quote, overlay in that area. That's all, I just wanted to reference. I've got a couple more questions in general. If we could have the, in, I'm not even sure if there's pages on this, the annual element progress report, housing element implementation that I referenced earlier, if you could bring that up, please, so we can see in large format, specific ADUs in Montecito that are by address, by parcel number, and by renter or owner, and by, I believe it's only, is it only moderate income? Or are there some less than moderate?
Chair Senna, it is a mix of moderate and above moderate within, I'm sorry, excuse me. It is all above moderate units within Montecito.
Can you enlarge that a bit, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, there we go. Getting better. Okay. Okay, so in adding those up, on that first page, there are three in Montecito. They're all rentals. Is that correct? And there's five on the second page. And again, they're all ADU rentals. These are all ADU, and they're all rentals. No owner occupied, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. ADUs are renter.
I have, there's no other, oh, Commissioner Newman.
With respect to Montecito itself, am I correct that we should look at the APN number and not the ZIP code? So that only those that have an APN of 007, and not all the properties that have a 93108 ZIP code are the only ones we should look at?
Commissioner Newman, through the chair. Yes, I would refer to the APN to have a more exact indication of where that unit is located versus using the ZIP code.
Jumping back to page four, 4.3 Arena Progress, in the second paragraph, is this, I just need to have a fine point on this. Housing production decreased in 2019. The county issued building permits for 242 units in 2019 compared to 328 units in 2018. Of these units, of those units, 40 were located in Montecito. Of which units? The units in 2019 or 2018?
Chair Senna, it's 40 units in 2019 that received issued building permits from the county.
Nineteen, okay. And including 7-1 family, 22 ADUs, and 11 multifamily units. And what do you describe as a multifamily unit?
This set of 11 multifamily units actually references the Casa Dorinda expansion project. That is what it's referring to.
Okay, and that's considered multifamily?
That is correct.
Not individual units?
Correct. They are not single-family, yes.
Okay.
While you're, may I just add, ask a quick...
Of course.
...of the condominium units that have been built, oh, that's also, excuse me, in Santa Barbara, because it's on Coast Village Road, but there have been several very high-end condominium projects that have gone up. And if it's in a single building, but they're condominiums, how is that classified?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair. State HCD has a definition that, I can pull it up for you guys and do a follow-up. However, it classifies the definition of a single-family dwelling, a multifamily dwelling, and then so on. Those units would be classified under multifamily, not single-family dwellings.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any other comments or thoughts regarding this?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kupiak, your mic, please? Thank you.
Other than Casa Dorinda, there are no other multi-unit developments in Montecito in 2019.
Commissioner Kupiak, through the chair, that is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting a fine point on that. Yes, excuse me?
Sorry.
Oh, yes, thank you. After our discussion and comments, do we have any public comment? Please step up. No, seeing none. Public comment is closed, thank you. So, would anybody like to make a motion? Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Montecito Planning Commission receive and file the APR, that we determine that the APR is not subject to SEQA. And we recommend that the CPC authorize staff, I guess it should be the MPC, actually, to provide the APR to the CPC Board, OPR, HCD, and City of Santa Barbara, only, however, as to items on Slide 4 of the staff presentation and utility scale ordinance.
For clarification, recommend that the CPC, is that correct? Not the MPC? Oh, right, thank you.
I'll accept that.
Okay, with that clarification, do we have a second?
Yes, I'd like to second it. It was my understanding that we, in number three, are recommending that the County Planning Commission act on this, so there is no change to Commissioner Newman's motion, and I second that motion, thank you.
It's just, it was just brought up for clarification that the MPC recommends that the County Planning Commission, just so that that is clarity there, okay?
Thank you, yes, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. We had a second. Any discussion, comments? Discussion? Thank you. Commissioner Newman.
Just by way of explanation, I limited the motion in item three to just those items affecting our planning area, for the reason that I don't want to give anybody the impression that our imprimatur review or thoughts apply to things outside of our planning area. And I know that that may not always have been the case, but I believe we did so last year likewise, so I don't want to comment or direct anybody to authorize anything with respect to, for instance, Isla Vista, the airport, or other items that are here.
Commissioner Keller.
It was with that understanding that I seconded the motion, so hopefully that will be acceptable in terms of a motion.
I basically am conflicted with this. I think this came before us as a whole package, and I know we carved out and discussed Montecito and its issues relating to Montecito, but I do think the whole package comes before us, and I think, hopefully, we read it all, whether we commented on it, it was before us, and I think it needs to be included in toto in the recommendation in number three. Comments, thoughts, deliberations? Thank you.
I think we have a motion, or can, is that just a question by you, or can we vote on the?
It was simply clarification. I, Mr. Wilson? Counsel?
Okay.
We have, we have a motion before us that's been seconded.
This is discussion, so.
This is discussion.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, so I'm just going to clarify the motion. I believe the motion is to receive and file the annual progress report, and then the second item is find that it's not a project under SEQA, and the third, I think part of that motion was to only recommend to the County Planning Commission those... planning commission those items that pertain to Montecito that was on Slide 4. I believe that's what the recommended, the motion is on the floor.
No, it's close to that. It's Slide 4 plus the addition of the utility scale ordinance item, which was not on Slide 4, but does potentially impact our Montecito planning area.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify that, utility grade solar, this report is for 2019. That wasn't contemplated in 2019. So adding it to that slide is not accurate, as it is not, wasn't part of the 2019 work program. So I just want to make that point when you discuss this further. So this report is a county-wide regional report. The county planning commission is designated as the planning agency, and so the Montecito Planning Commission is a recommending body for the purpose of this report. So if the recommendation by staff would be as the motions indicate in the staff report, just to recommend to the county planning commission to receive and file this report and to recommend to the board as outlined there. If the Montecito Planning Commission wants to take a different motion, that's fine. On the report, in its totality, is still going to go forward to the county planning commission. So I leave that up to the discretion of the Montecito Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any further comments on this motion that's before us?
May I just ask another question of staff? Would there be any implication that we do not approve of areas outside of Montecito if we choose to recommend that the specific Montecito-centric amendments or portions be adopted? And I guess I'm asking that of counsel, please.
Commissioner Keller through the chair. So to clarify, Government Code Section 65400 puts a procedural requirement that the APR come before, excuse me, the designated planning agency for the county. Because this is a county-wide regional action, ultimately, it will be the county planning commission that will be making that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And the item is brought to the Montecito Planning Commission in order to make a recommendation to the county planning commission. So that is pursuant to Section 2-25.2 of the County Code, which authorizes the Montecito Planning Commission to provide recommendations to the county planning commission on regional projects. And so to directly answer your question, that was quite a prelude, but to directly answer your question, there is no ramifications to the Montecito Planning Commission making recommendations to the county planning commission with respect to those items that impact the Montecito Planning Commission.
Commissioner Kupiak.
But my understanding is, you know, we've just gone through an annual progress report. This isn't an action plan. You're reporting to us on what's happened, you know, and in terms of the fact that it's just a report about what's happened, I mean, at least, I'm fine with advancing the report to the, you know, I would love to be able to advance the report with, you know, the kind of comments that we were just making, you know. I mean, the report is an indication that there's a tremendous failure in our housing component, you know, which affects our environment. You know, I realize this is, it's kind of a wake-up call. I mean, this is a warning to Santa Barbara in general, Montecito as well, that in fact there are actions that we should be taking, and I don't know how those actions get implemented, but the report's an indicator that somehow our behavior as a county has to change if we intend to accomplish some of the goals that we intend to accomplish, like greenhouse gas and reduction. And, you know, the report's just a benchmark. But, you know, this report, or whatever vote I cast in terms of its approval to move forward, to be, you know, documented, comes with a serious foreboding that this report should be taken very seriously, and that our government agencies address it in a way that really tries to look at, how do we change our developmental behavior so that we can accomplish some of the missions that we absolutely must accomplish?
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I apologize. I did not mean to have my light on.
Okay. So at this point, we have, we have a motion and a second. We have had discussion and comments and deliberation. Do we, at this point, wish a roll call, or does anyone want to table this, et cetera? You want to go forward with roll call? Or at this point, would we offer an amendment to this? Or some Robert's rules, please?
Madam Chair.
I was asking staff. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, there is a motion that's been seconded on the floor. So the action to the Montecito Planning Commission is one, proceed with the vote, or the motion maker could withdraw the motion or amend it. At this time, there is a motion that's on the floor for the commission to act on.
Thank you.
So the chair could call for a vote if the chair would like to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I feel we had an adequate explanation from counsel that there would be no negative implication of voting in favor of the motion as presented. We would be passing the first two and then just putting the specific limitation on the third aspect of the recommendation. So I just wanted to clarify that I, my understanding of what counsel said was that there's nothing to be assumed or implied by any kind of specificity of the third part of our recommendation.
Any other discussion? I would have one more comment. My concern is, this is presented to us in toto for the county. And I think if we proceed this way, then we should ask when this comes before us again in any other component, long-range planning, just to please carve out anything for Montecito. We're not going to look at anything else. And I think that's, I think that's, that is not what we're here for. And I think it's important to advance the total report. We have looked at it, I have, I've done my due diligence, and I think it's before us, and it's implied that we will do this. That's just my comment on this. Commissioner Kupiak.
Well, I would echo the fact that whatever report comes to us, that whether it affect, I mean, we as Montecedans are affected by every other jurisdiction that surrounds us, as is, are the other jurisdictions that have a chance to look at this. So, I mean, I would not want to see this report carved down to something where we didn't understand what was going on in the immediate environment around us.
Commissioner Newman.
Call the question.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiak?
No.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Palice?
Nope.
Chair, Senator Howard.
No.
Motion fails, two to three.
Would, Commissioner Keller.
I would like to make another motion to accept all three recommendations as stated, with the only proviso being that on number three is that the MPC recommends that the CPC authorize staff, just for clarification. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, thoughts, deliberations are on? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Kupiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Nay.
Commissioner Palice?
Aye.
Chair, Senator Howard.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we take a two-minute break to set up for?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Two-minute break or three? And continuing with our agenda, after a break, we are now at the Thomas. If you could read it into the record, please. Item number three, I guess we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a report from the Planning and Development Department on rebuilding after the Thomas fire and generate debris flow.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'd like to introduce Ms. Willow Brown. She's going to be presenting for supervising planner Tess Harris, who is not available at this moment, and she'll be presenting. And then through the presentation, the information that was submitted for the hearing today did not include the plan check review cycle, and Ms. Brown will be able to go over that. It was submitted back in January, and so that information is available online. I do have copies printed out if you would like to have a hard copy, and it's also can be made available to the public as well. However, it was included in the January packet, and the information hasn't been, has not been updated or changed since January. So we will go over that information. I just wanted to have that clarification before Ms. Brown begins.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good morning, I'm Willow Brown, and I'll be doing the rebuild report. So this first page, this document depicts the safety inspection report that we generate, and it shows the comparison of the initial safety assessment compared to the current status of the same structure. And this is shown graphically here. So the pie chart on the left represents the number of structures that were initially tagged as red and yellow during the safety inspections done immediately after the debris flow in 2018. And the pie chart on the right shows the current safety inspection status for those initial inspections. Since the original safety inspections, there's been a 41% reduction in structures that were red-tagged and a 12% reduction in structures that were yellow-tagged. 53% of these structures are now green-tagged. The current inspections show 18% of structures are red-tagged and 29% are yellow-tagged as compared to original inspections, which consisted of 59% red-tagged and 41% yellow-tagged structures, not including what was initially green-tagged. Since the debris flow, 74 applications for planning permits for debris flow reconstruction were submitted. There were a total of 64 applications for like-for-like exemptions, 45 of which were issued by February 10, 2020. There were also two applications for land use permits and eight applications for coastal development permits. 112 building permits were applied for, 98 of which have been issued. In addition to those, 110 building permits, 183 counter permits were issued over the counter. So this shows the trend in planning and building permits applied for after the debris flow, and it spans from February of 2019 to February of 2020. The graph on the left shows the trend of planning permits. In February of 2019, 42% of the permits applied for were issued. And by February 2020, this number has increased to 70%. The number of building permits has also gradually increased, with 90 permit applications submitted by February 2019 and an average of two applications submitted every month thereafter. The amount of over-the-counter permits issued did not have much change, with five applications submitted between February 2019 and February 2020.
I'm terribly sorry, but because this is so very difficult to read, and you're going relatively quickly.
I'm sorry.
Could you point out where these figures are in the graph, or else expand it so we can see it a little better? Or use a pointer, please, because I can't read this, I'm afraid.
Yeah, so this top part, this right here shows the applications submitted, the number, it goes through the like-for-like exemptions, land use permits, and coastal development permits. The numbers submitted and approved each month throughout 2019, and then January and February 2020 over here. And then the bottom is the building permits and, okay, the building permits and counter permits, the numbers submitted and approved each month. And then the bottom, the, this graph right here shows the trend in planning permits. Each month, the approved is on the left, the submitted is on the left, and then the approved is on the right for each month. This shows March 2019 through February 2020. And then the right is the building permits for applications submitted and approved permits. And the red is the counter permits, and the blue is the building permits. Okay.
Okay, so there's the color coding coming in. I see all the color codes on the top bar here, and so that, it doesn't translate to your graphs. Your graphs are in three colors, correct?
Oh, yes.
But the multiple color then is applied as we go forward, is that correct? No?
No, this just shows the different months each have a different color, but the graphs just...
Okay, it's just, yeah, it just, so the color doesn't apply to anything else other than different months, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the colors on the graphs show, the green is coastal development permits, the red is land use permits, and the blue is like-for-like exemptions.
Correct. It's just the color palette has...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, a lot of colors.
Clarification is lovely, but just to apply it in the appropriate way with the graph, the data there, and then the top bar is months only.
Yes, it doesn't apply to anything moving forward.
Thank you very much.
So this is the disaster summary by status. Okay, so of the 525 parcels affected by the debris flow and Thomas fire, the county was able to contact 462 of the property owners or their representative. The majority of the properties affected have finished repairs, with 59.6% of these properties not requiring any more work. 16.6% of the cases are currently inactive, and planning and development staff are working with the owners of the other 9.9% to help them rebuild. And this needs to be updated where it says hearing pending. It's either in final processing or closed, but this is the cases your commission has reviewed between January 2018 to the present. And nine planners have been assigned to these cases, ranging from one to six cases assigned to each planner. And this is the plan check review through building. The first cycle, how many days it takes for them to do their plan check. 67% of the plan checks are done within the first 10 days. 23% are done between 11 and 30 days. And 7% take over 31 days for the first plan check review.
Excuse me, I don't believe I have that in my... Is this what you were just... Okay, so that was given to us prior?
Mm-hmm.
And you're just referencing that again for informational purposes?
Yes.
Okay, could you slow down a little bit? Could you start again? Thank you.
So for the building plan check review, this pie chart shows the amount of time it takes to go through the first cycle for building to review the plans. So 67% of those plan checks take less than 10 days for the project. 23% take between 11 and 30 days. And 7% take over 31 days for the first cycle plan check review. 117 first cycle reviews have occurred or are in process related to the debris flow.
May I just ask if these are for all plans? Or are these for the like-for-like?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, these slides related to the plan check review cycle is only related to the plan checks for debris flow or impacted properties. So this is not capturing everything. We narrowed down this data to only those properties that had submitted building plans for impacted properties for the debris flow.
No, I was just wondering, yes, on some of those qualify as like-for-like, or almost all of them do, except for the elevation. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, yeah, this report on the plan check review cycle captures every building permit, whether it was a like-for-like for the planning side, or if it was a permit issued by planning. But this is all plan checks reviewed related to the debris flow. So short answer is yes, it captures everything.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. Going to the list, unfortunately, the page is unnumbered. Application numbers. Yes, that one. The third one from the bottom says Monticito Debris Flow Protection Plan. And I'm sorry, I don't remember anything by that name coming before us in July. What does that refer to?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, that is the debris nets.
Ah, okay. Thank you for that. And then I have one other question with respect to the report. Just a moment. Going to page 13, disaster summary by status. For the categories currently inactive, awaiting owner action, and no contact with owner, have those statistics changed since we had a public meeting and since the non-conforming properties had to apply for an extension? In other words, I'm trying to get a sense of whether some of those who had not at all participated in the planning process have now chosen to do so?
Commissioner Newman, to the chair. They have slightly changed. I don't have the exact number, but I could go to the previous presentation. We have made contact with more people now since the meeting.
And then I would like to thank staff for these two pie charts we got today for the first time. I've been very much...
So, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, those were given in January. So they're part of the January packet, and they're online.
The only additional request I would make is if we could have numbers that are associated with these, so we would know how many fell within each category. That would be a worthy addition.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Newman, are you talking about specific count numbers on the percentages?
Yeah, so as an example, it says 35% fell within 11 to 30 days. I'm wondering what that raw number looks like.
The 26% of 117? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we have to do the math. It's, just do then 35% of 52. Is that the right calculus here?
So, Commissioner Newman, we can look at this report, and if you want the specific numbers, we can add those. Otherwise, we can do the math, but we can go back and work on this report if you'd like.
I think it's sufficient, personally. I think it is not necessary, and we can do the math. I don't know what the other commissioners feel like, but I think it's too granular. I think you've done granular work to the point where it's entirely appropriate and can be understood and interpreted appropriately. That's just my personal opinion.
Madam Chair. Just as a footnote, I would like to suggest what you just said is incorrect. I mean, I don't know how, for instance, 35% of 52 equals 18.2 units. So we either have whole numbers using the percentages times the total, or we don't. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense to have anything other than a whole number, so...
Commissioners, how do you want to proceed on this? Do you want to direct staff to make whole numbers out of this? Or keep with percentages in general, just a consensus? Commissioner Keller?
Going forward, if it's not too much trouble, whole numbers would be helpful. But I think for now, what we're looking at is, gives us a good sense. And the one statistic I would appreciate is this really sad no contact with owner or representatives, that that represents 12%. I think that's a slight reduction from previously. I think it was maybe up to as much as 16%, but it's just distressing to know that those properties will possibly sit derelict and that nothing will be happening. And I'd like to get a sense of the trend of that, if you please.
Comment, Spell?
Yeah, I would agree that going forward, hard numbers would be appropriate. This is fine for now, but then I know we get this report at each meeting, so, you know, I think that having specific numbers would be helpful. And of the, what's in that mustard-colored pie chart that's up there for no contact, I mean, how many of those are absentee? I mean, is it just impossible to reach the owner, you know? I don't know if you can even answer that question.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, not to belabor these whole numbers and raw numbers and percentages, this report does have the raw numbers at the bottom. You can look at what those numbers are. So looking back, Madam Chair, if you would like, I went back to December of last year when we had our community workshop. And generally, the numbers have generally stayed the same in regards to these different percentages, or even looking at the raw numbers. So we went back to look at December when we had the community meeting. It was 59% was no further work needed. There was 10.3% that was active. Staff was working with them, and you can see that number has gone down to 9.9%. And then currently inactive was 16.4%. So it stayed pretty much the same. And then the currently inactive has gone up to 2.1% as far as seller property or pending or likely. And then the no contact has stayed pretty much the same at 12% since December.
Thank you. You have another comment?
I just, thank you, if you're finished with your report. Thank you for being patient with us. I just wanted to reference a very fine article in The Independent on February 6th, in which Melinda Burns specifically interviewed Mary Beth Myers, who lives in the Spanish Town section. And her project came before us about four or five years ago, and then I guess was completely demolished in the debris flow. And she's now already built, rebuilt with concrete caissons 22 feet into the ground, and the first four elevated to six feet off the ground. And I guess that came under the like-for-like, even though what she has bears no resemblance to what was approved by this commission four years ago. But, sorry, that's parenthetical. It says here that according to planning and development of 306 dwelling structures marked by building inspectors where red or yellow tags fully, 138 or 45% have not been fully repaired or rebuilt. I couldn't find that corresponding number in your report. And I'm just curious, because she's usually... I just maybe couldn't do the math? Or if there's been any change?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, there hasn't been any change, and we provided that information to the article. And that number, those numbers are buried in these reports. And so when you look at this report, it kind of breaks down by percentages. So this graphic explains that of all the red and yellow-tagged properties, this is now, this is the current status of those properties. And so you can see that approximately 53% of those that were originally red or yellow-tagged have been, those tags have been removed. They've either been removed, I mean, the tags have been removed, so, which means they've been fully repaired, or in some instances, the properties have been completely cleared from structures. And so then that equates to a green tag, because it's safe.
Okay, I was just adding together original inspection, yellow placard, red placard. The total of those is 410, and she quotes it as being 306. So that's why I was confused. Is there some, was there some subtlety that I missed here? Or that she missed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, without doing a deeper dive on those numbers, I can speak to what she's done. Pretty much the information that she's provided is what we've given to her. And so depending on how she asked it and the information we gave to her, I'm not, without looking at that article and understanding what she's doing, I can't respond to that right now.
Okay, but it is correct to say, just doing the math, in the first column of the original inspection, there was 410. And now there are 191? Yellow and red?
Commissioner Keller, to the chair, what report are you looking at?
I'm looking at the second page. And up above, where it says original inspection and current inspection, I'm just adding red and yellow placards. So I was adding 167 and 243, which makes 410. And then I was adding 118 and 73, which makes 191.
Commissioner Keller, to the chair, that's correct. Those information, this information that's shown here is the accurate information that the department's capturing right now.
Okay, great. So you're still, but you're also talking about a total, previously, original inspection of 631 structures, and now 410, you're saying, up in the left-hand corner. And of that 221, where do those go to?
Commissioner Keller, to the chair, thank you. The purpose of this report is to track the progress of the red and yellow-tagged properties. So the reference to the 221, those were the... There were 631 properties that were inspected. Out of those, 221 had a green tag. So for the purpose of this report, we excluded the 221. And so when you look at the pie graph, it shows the red and yellow. So that red and yellow is excluding the 221 that were originally green-tagged. And so we're no longer tracking those. And so when you go forward, as property's been repaired or completely demolished, the pie graph on the right is showing that progress that's been made in the community from the original red and yellow-tagged properties.
Right, I understand that, because if you add everything in the left-hand column, it does add up to 631. But if, and then if you add everything in the right-hand column, which does include the green placards, it only adds up to 410.
So, Commissioner Keller, thank you. So the magical number today is 410. So when you add the original red and yellow-tagged properties, it equals 410. And so then the second column is saying, out of those 410, this is the current status of those 410 properties.
Okay, so you did not, you did include the 221 in the first amount, and in the second amount, that involves, the green involves everything from red and yellow that's been moved into green.
Yeah, Commissioner Keller, to the chair, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, it's very, it's clear. It's just not, wasn't clear to me. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have just a few on the status update. The last, on the applications. The, I've asked this before, Hammond's Meadow is in process. Are we going to see that this year in the process?
Madam Chair, I think that went, I think that went to you last year.
It did. So what part is final processing?
So final processing is when, and as Ms. Brown indicated earlier, and which I will admit we felt to do, we need to update this report. Because there's a number of items in there, say, hearing pending. That hearing's already happened.
Great.
And we just need to update this report. Hammond's Meadow, final processing is, it needs to be updated to closed. So we're done as far as what we need to be doing. And then it's transitioning over to either permit compliance or the next stages of that processing. So as of now, it's not anticipated to coming back to you at this time.
Oh, thank you. So there will be an update next month. And the second is the Hawker Philippi's lot line adjustment. And I meant to ask Director Plowman about where that, after our, after our hearing, what is the status of it? Thank you. It says appeal filed, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that is correct. That status is correct. That application was appealed following the Monticito Planning Commission's actions. And so as of now, we don't have a date for that to go to the board supervisors. I think we were targeting a date in April, potentially, for that to be heard by the board supervisors.
All right, any other questions, Commissioners? I think we can then go to Commissioners' requests for future agenda topics. Do we have any? Any Commissioners? This is the last item on our agenda today. Thank you, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to suggest we have two items on our future agendas. First, apropos to our discussion about the rebuilding of Monticito, I have found the report by Mr. Robert Niehaus, who has issued both a one-year and a two-year report to be of interest. And I would suggest we invite him to come and present his report with respect to the rebuild, and to share with us and staff his data analysis about the rebuild, which is a bit different. a bit different from staff's. As a second item, I would like to suggest that we put on our agenda the consideration of whether we should appoint an ad hoc committee to review and perhaps make recommendations to the Montecito Planning Commission with respect to our procedures manual. I think there are some aspects of it that cry out for revision. There are some things that have occurred, such as courtesy review of projects that cry out for, I think, some procedural guidance. This should not be, I hope, a heavy lift for us, but I think it's a very necessary one and would like to see that put on an agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller?
Just as a follow-up to my questions regarding the sanitation district and their plans, yes, we are going to be giving them approval, but frequently, it's difficult to make a decision without any preamble, without any preparation. What was the conclusion?
We're not going to be giving them approval. They're going to be before us.
It's going to be before us, we have to give them a land use permit. So I'm just saying that, is there any way of getting further information prior to our actually having the vote on it only as a preamble for being better prepared for that vote? Or is that just me that likes more rather than less information?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Keller, I think we've discussed this before. Our recommendation is that they ought to be brought to you as part of the regular motion and action to maintain the planning commissioners neutrality and impartiality when reviewing the projects. So we recommend bringing any item before you as a discussion item before it's prepared and ready for decision by the decision makers.
I understand. You know how much I dislike that recommendation because I like to have a little bit more preparation time, but I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman?
Yeah, I share my colleagues' concerns and maybe staff could consider posting that item as soon as it is possible and maybe even ahead of the entirety of the agenda so that when it is going to come before us, we have more lead time than the usual week or so before our meeting is convened. I think that would be a good accommodation within the scope of our existing procedures without favoring one applicant and project and how it's treated procedurally from another. When we do have a substantial project, whether it's a commercial one or whatever, that has a lot of documentation or is of gain particular notoriety in the community, getting it to us in advance of the one week of our meeting, I think, is the best way to approach it. And we would appreciate that accommodation from staff.
I would also like to inquire, as that particular project has been in the media and different community forums, whether it's Montecito Association, et cetera, or the sanitary district in their public meetings, if, as far as general information, we are not precluded from that, are we, attending those without comment, just for informational purposes, if something, with any project, if something comes before the community? Are we precluded from attending?
Madam Chair, to re-summarize the requirements, when the planning commission acts in its quasi-adjudicatory capacity, such as it will be for this particular project that we're discussing, Commissioners are required, under principles of due process, to enter the hearing as reasonably impartial decision makers. As a general matter, Commissioners are not precluded from obtaining information in advance of that hearing, subject to those requirements regarding bias. And any information that Commissioners obtain in advance of the hearing would be subject to ex parte disclosures if they were relevant to the ultimate decision.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further requests from Commissioners for future agenda items? I have one. Regarding, we brought this up last time, regarding development of pathways throughout the community in the right-of-way with department agencies that we do not have purview over. And Public Works in the community is basically, continues to advance that they would like to hear future projects and ongoing projects which affect the right-of-way and pathway development. And I was wondering if there's any way Public Works might be able to come to us and just give us an update on particularly, I think Olive Mill is, and in general areas, having to do with the rebuild status post debris flow. It is, we want our, I think pedestrian safety is, whether it's the roundabouts, whether it's the pathways, it's incumbent upon us to basically have, to be informed about process of what's there, what's happening. And if there's any way that could be invited, the Public Works, whatever component is working on that. The second is, there was discussion in the community about a spreading basin at Olive Mill in the Triangle area and to protect Montecito Oaks. The Randall Road is getting their debris basin. And Montecito Oaks, from my understanding, is requesting or has heard that a debris basin from flood control has been, is being considered. And if we could have some, if we could have some clarification, if that's in fact true, if it is not, just to inform the community about, there are parcels, many parcels around there with no homes at this point, and are there parcels that are going to be considered as the Randall Road, if that's part of it. So it's just a clarification issue, but I think it's important to be agendized so the community can attend. Thank you.
I just would like to support both of those and to go further to say, in regard to the walkways, it's my understanding that the decision makers in Montecito have been the Bucket Brigade, Montecito Trails, working with the Montecito Community Foundation and the Montecito Association, all of which are private membership organizations, which is why I think it's really important that, a project like this, given that Commissioner Senauer and I have spent many, many hours working on the landscaping of the two roundabouts proposed, this would seem to merit as much input from the appointed and official bodies as the private independent membership groups. So I know we got the sense from the last presentation of Public Works that they're prepared to go ahead with the cheapest possible way to implement pedestrian safety. But it concerns me that cheapest might not be the best. So if there's any way we can assert what little influence or jurisdiction we have, I would really like to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
I share the interest in these topics, but would like to say, based on my experience last year as Chair and having met with the Director of Public Works and also those in the flood control department within Public Works, it is important to them, as it should be to us, that it be understood that Public Works projects, except for very narrow exceptions, are not subject to our jurisdiction. And our approval, our approbation and so on is not a requirement that they want to, by implication, be subjected to or at all. And they are not. They did come to us last year as a courtesy with respect to projects that were in process. And it is for that very reason that I suggested we consider at a future meeting, whether it's Public Works or any other entity, such as the Fire District, that we look at our procedures as to how we want to conduct ourselves with respect to courtesy reviews. Because I will say that disparaging the efforts of those departments or their outcomes as being cheap, shoddy, or what have you, when they're not subject to our jurisdiction, when they have their own budgetary limitations and so on, doesn't enhance the relationship and isn't a courtesy that I would like to be part of.
Commissioner Polichek?
I hear both Commissioners here, but what, communities who feel that they want to enhance public infrastructure, establish triplets, they have partnerships with private and public arenas where the private sector can offer money and enhance what it may look like. And I just think it's a matter of beforehand, having some kind of agreement on what projects you would particularly want to enhance. And so maybe through the Montecito Association or, like you were saying, the other organizations, that we could appeal to Public Works, understanding it's, all goes through their authorization. But I think it's just a matter of getting in front early. And if we can, you know, offer something tangible, I think the county would be open to enhance aesthetics for our Public Works right-of-ways.
Commissioner Keller?
I apologize that cheap was not a good choice of words, but I know they have an obligation to do things the least expensive way possible. I discovered that with Southern California Edison, who wanted to put a transformer in front of my home. And they have a right, they have an obligation to the public to use the least expensive means of solving their utility problems. So unless my suggestion of having them come before us is a way of possibly bringing to light that if there are individuals in the community who would like to support, contribute to, be involved in an enhancement of the, you know, or an expansion of the way it has been possibly planned or projected, that this might be a good forum to bring those parties together. Other than our going, it doesn't seem to me that it's appropriate for us to approach these other groups who seem to all be in concert with and already working with Public Works. I feel as though there should be some acknowledgement that we're in a slightly different position than these other groups. And it would be helpful if we could present this as a forum to bring parties together to create enhanced projects.
Commissioner Polichek?
I'm a volunteer here for one reason, so that we will see what happens in the public realm. I think when things are happening in the public right-of-way, whether we really have jurisdiction or not, I think to be informed, to be able to comment, and to be able to avoid projects where the budget concern becomes overwhelming, or where we avoid projects where expediency seems to be the thing that's driving the bus rather than the quality of the environment, I don't know that we'll make a difference or not in our commentary, but I think we have to try. I think it's our obligation as a, as a planning commission to see those projects and to comment on them. So the invitation to be informed and to be able to comment, I think, is critical to what I think we're here for. So, you know, I could use the word cheap.
Thank you. I think, I think first off, we understand what's in our purview and what is not. How this brought up, it was brought up as informational only. We, it's of import that this commission be respectful to other departments. They have other concerns, they have other constraints. We do not want, we are not here to usurp their authority by any means. This is just brought up and repeatedly, that is simply an informational process that, regarding this issue, we would like to have before us in some way. It also impacts us when community members ask us, thinking it's within our scope of information, that we should be knowing about this. And it's difficult to apprise them that, one, it's not within our purview. Then they ask, well, why not? And then you attempt to basically be declarative in your explanation. And then the bottom line is, well, it'd be nice if you were informed somehow. And I think that's sort of the summary of this. It's not a matter of wishing this to be in our purview. It is not. It's simply moving forward with a knowledge and information base so we can then go back to the community and give them information that is appropriate. It's very simple. We do not want to demean any agency. That's not why we are here. We are here simply to see if we can understand what they're proceeding with and what perhaps partnership groups they have already arranged with. And so it's, it's just information. Thank you.
And the only other point that I think needs to be added to that is that this is a noticed and televised hearing such that if people want more information, they have access to it, which they do not with any of the private organizations that are currently working on this project. So I think the fact that we are noticed, public, if there is information that needs to be imparted, this is the forum in which to do it.
Thank you for that addition, Commissioner Keller.
So, Madam Chair, I think what I'm hearing is the NBC would like to invite Public Works to attend a future meeting.
Any other questions, comments? Yes? And Ben, our next meeting is March 18th, 2020, Long Range Planning Division Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 Work Program. And it is, oh, excuse me.
No, don't we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm going to do right now.
I move to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned at 12:20. Look forward to next month. Thank you.